Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. A couple of formalities, ladies and gentlemen. First of all, thank you all for coming this morning. We will just address a couple of formalities, if we may. The minutes. Could I ask my colleagues to confirm the minutes of the Licensing Subcommittee A, which took place on the 2nd of May 2017 and have been laid on the table for 30 minutes?
Agreed.
Thank you. Members, are there any declarations of personal and prejudicial interest in relation to any items included on the agenda for this meeting in accordance with the Waverley Code of Local Government Conduct?
No.
Thank you very much. Right, we will now move on to the Licensing Act application for variation to an existing premises licence, the Fox 21 Frensham Road, Lowerborne, Farnham, Surrey, GU103PH. Thank you. I have to advise you that the committee has met briefly immediately prior to this hearing to ensure that we are all familiar with the details of the application and to establish areas of uncertainty that will need to be further explored, need further exploration. However, no predetermination has taken place and the discussion was held in the presence of the Borough Solicitor, Daniel Bainbridge, and monitored by Emma McQuillan, the Democratic Services Manager. Thank you. My name is Patricia Ellis. I am a Waverley Borough councillor and the area that I represent specifically is Cranley West. However, I have responsibilities, as do my colleagues, for the wider community of Waverley Borough Council. Could I ask my colleagues to please introduce themselves?
I'm councillor Robert Knowles. I am a member for Hayesamet East and Greyswood.
Peter Ishwood, I'm a member for Hindhead.
Thank you. We have two councillors present. I wonder if they could introduce themselves, please?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm Martin Lear and I'm one of the councillors for Farnham Bourne.
Thank you.
And I'm councillor Carol Coburn, the councillor for the Bourne at both town and borough level. And councillor Lear and I have been working together, so we will not duplicate. We are working as one this morning, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, councillors. Officers, could I ask you to introduce yourselves, please?
Emma McQuillan, Democratic Services Manager.
Daniel Bainbridge, Borough Solicitor.
Emma Dearslay, Committee Secretary.
Paul Hughes, Licensing Manager.
Gillian Carson-Jones, Administrator.
Thank you. As Chairman, I'd like to introduce the application under consideration and to briefly explain, if I may, the intention of the hearing. The Subcommittee is requested to consider the application for the variation of the premises licence on its merits. Section 3.5, open brackets, three, close brackets, Licensing Act 2003 provides that the Subcommittee, having regard to the relevant representations made, must take such of the following steps, if any, as it considers appropriate for the promotion of the licensing objectives. So the opportunity is to modify the conditions of the premises licence, whether by alteration or omission of conditions or the addition of new conditions. Any conditions must be appropriate for the promotion of the licensing objections proportionate and should address the matters raised in the representations. There is the opportunity to reject the application in whole or in part. Thank you. Yes. Could I just explain that the hearing will be formal but relaxed and enable the committee to reach a judgement which, as far as possible, is acceptable to all parties within the rules and guidelines imposed by the Licensing Act of 2003? This Subcommittee is meeting to consider the submissions and reach a judgement under the rules and guidance imposed by the Licensing Act of 2003 and having regard to the council's statement of licensing policy. Thank you. Could I now ask the applicants, please, to introduce themselves and any supporters, if you have supporters with you, and explain who will be presenting the case?
Good morning, Chair. My name is Piers Warren from TLT Solicitors and I represent the applicant here today. And I have Nick Lawson to my right, who is from the applicant company, from Green King. And next to him is Morgan Mead, who is a company director and secretary at the operating company. Behind us, we have the DPS, that's Matt. And then Lee Seabury from Head Office for Green King has come down to observe, but I will be making the submissions on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you. I'm so sorry. Could you give me your name again, please?
Of course, it's Piers Warren.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr Hughes, as the licensing officers, are any responsible authorities present?
There is, Madam Chair. You have Environmental Health, Saturday, Julie Gregory and Elizabeth Bance.
Thank you very much. So could I ask the representatives to make, to introduce themselves, please? Sorry.
I'm Julie Gregory from Environmental Health.
And Elizabeth Bance from Environmental Health.
Thank you very much. Right. Mr Hughes, could I ask you, please, to introduce the application and outline the matter that the Subcommittee is being asked to...
Thank you, Madam Chairman. You have in front of you an application to vary the premises licence of the Fox Frensham Road, Lowerborne, Farnham, where 14 valid representations have been received from other persons, one representation from Environmental Health as a responsible authority, and we have received two late representations which have been accepted by the applicants and handed out this morning. The applicants propose in brief that the licence will allow an additional half an hour extra to the end of their alcohol sales and opening times, Monday to Saturday, and the removal and replacement of current licence conditions. A copy of the application form is attached to Annex Two. Annex Three is a copy of the existing plans and Annex Four is of the new plans. One representation has been received by Environmental Health as a responsible authority, which is attached to Annex Six. As mentioned, the application has received 14 representations from other persons, which are attached to Annex Seven and two late ones that were handed out earlier at the meeting. Officers, request you consider the application.
Thank you, Mr Hughes. Does anyone at this stage have any questions of the licensing officer on this application, the report? No? Thank you very much. Do members of the Subcommittee have any questions for the licensing officer?
Not at this...
No, not at the moment.
Not this time.
Thank you very much. Would the applicant now please outline their application? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And do excuse me, I seem to have come down with an early season cold, so I'll try and be fairly concise, but there are another number of matters I think we have to go through and explore in depth. We're very happy to accept the two late representations. We always feel that everyone should have a chance to have their say in these things and welcome this process for you to then determine the application. You'll find the application set out in brief, pages five and six of your papers. Essentially, you can break it down into four parts. There's five bullet points there, but they break down roughly into four parts. Part number one is a change to the plans to add a licensable area on the first floor, and I'll take you to the plans in a minute so we can have a quick look at those. The second part is, as your licensing officer said, an extension to the hours for the sale of alcohol, which is effectively a 30-minute addition, so a modest increase on the current hours at the licence, and we can compare those shortly as well. Thirdly, we have what are known as seasonal non-standard variations. Those fall into two categories, there's the New Year's Eve and the seasonal Sundays that are outlined in the pack. And then finally, a complete wholesale change to the operating schedule, which is the conditions by which a premises must operate and if it doesn't operate, creates a criminal liability for failure to operate under those conditions. So as a whole, there are those four parts. It's probably worth actually starting with the last one of those, the operating schedule, because that kind of informs everything else, really. And you can find that at pages 36 to 38 of your papers, so it forms part of the application itself. What you'll see there is some 22 new conditions that we are proposing to add to the licence. The current conditions on the licence, if you're interested in comparing them, are pages 14 and 15, but actually, as we're replacing the whole lot, I won't concentrate too much. Suffice to say this, though, the new operating schedule is what I'd call a much more modern and enforceable operating schedule. The conditions are very clear, concise, and they follow a pattern through. The older conditions, with respect, are probably a slightly older way of doing things. They tend to be shorter, they tend to be less capable of enforcement, actually, and in some cases, they don't deal with some of the issues that are raised. So, for instance, there are no conditions on the licence in terms of controlling numbers in the garden at certain times of night or closing certain garden areas down. The new conditions, which we'll just go through very quickly, obviously there to address that following discussions with the residents and some of the concerns that have been raised. So if we look at the conditions at 36, 37 and 38, and I don't intend to go through them all, you have them all here, but what you'll see is there's conditions that are, such as addition of CCTV, which is always useful for prevention of crime disorder, and then probably of most importance to you for today's purposes, for the nature of the representations that have been received, we have the conditions at D, Box D, which is page 37 and over on to page 38, which deal with the prevention of public nuisance. Now, these conditions are designed effectively to deal with the concerns or at least try and mitigate those parts of the concerns that are within the control of the operators of the premises to try and prevent any public nuisance. So we have a written garden and terrace management policy, for instance, which actually deals with how the operators would manage the gardens at the various times and indeed sets out what needs to be done by them, and they can be held accountable to the standards set out in that policy. Same with the dispersal policy, which obviously, as one goes later into the evening, one would want to see a dispersal policy, in particular where issues have been raised about customers as they leave, and that will fit into actually what we're proposing in terms of the slightly later hours, in terms of actually helping us to address the dispersal. So that is of importance. And then we have regulated entertainment conditions to try and ensure that we don't cause a public nuisance if there's any entertainment at the premises. And then probably key here, and this is when I come back to that point about there is nothing on the current licence, the access to the garden and terrace area being closed at separate times so that we can actually manage customers down and in and away from the parts that are closest to the residential property or properties that are closest to us. And you'll see here, the garden and terrace area to be closed to customers at nine, save to access from and to the designated smoking area. And when we look at the plan in a second, I'll show you where all these three areas are, but they're fairly clear on the plan. And the idea is the garden, if you know the premises at the back, has a gate on it so you can actually shut and lock the gate so no one can go in the garden after that time, and that's what we're proposing to operate by here. Also of interest is this notion of a complaints log. We want to be held to the standards by which we purport to trade. A complaints log allows residents to complain. The log means we have to record that complaint, and then if there's any argument as to whether we did or didn't do anything, or whether a complaint was or wasn't received, the environmental protection officers can come in, check our logs and see what we are doing. And you'll see importantly, that we don't just have to log a complaint, we have to log the actions we take in relation to that complaint thereafter. So this is quite a comprehensive, I submit, operating schedule and actually gives a lot more protection to residents than that which is currently on the premises licence. So let's have a quick look at the plans and then we can do away with things like the upstairs bit, and you can see the garden areas. These can be found from pages 41 onwards. There's a number of plans, and the new plans can be found at pages 45, 46 and 47. Probably of most interest, actually, 46, you'll see the new upstairs area that we're looking to licence. It's a room up above, towards the front of the premises. And then 47, you'll see the garden area, patio areas, and you'll see the smoking area. Now, there isn't a line actually delineating the patio from the smoking area to the left. I don't know whether this... I can show you, but effectively, there's the garden area, there's patio, and this is the smoking area. I've drawn a line across there because quite simply, that's the easiest way to delineate that, is from the end of the building effectively across. So that's the smoking area we're talking about, allowing customers in after the prohibited time, which is, I think, nine for the rest of the garden, as we've set out in the application. So there you have those areas. Now, as is always the case with these applications, there is reason why we're here. It's not on a whim that one comes before a committee and makes these things. And the reason is this, we had, Green King had a pub that had been trading with a tenant in there. It's a tenanted pub, so it's not managed. We leased the pub effectively to the operators, who then managed their own business within it. We had a tenant who'd been there for a very significant period of time, I think 20-plus years, and candidly, her time at the pub, standards had slipped, I think it's fair to say. I don't want to be disingenuous to the lady, she's not here to have any say, but certainly from a Green King point of view, the pub was becoming untenable in its current format. It wasn't trading very well at all, and indeed, it was being run down and for various lease reasons, certain obligations weren't being met. So actually, when she then assigned her lease across to Morgan and his chaps to come in and take it on, it was on the basis of a significant investment, a significant change in the operation, and to try and make it more community focused or to give it more of a community focus to allow for the range of events that now one has to have at a premises. It's not the case that one can serve beer on a Friday and Saturday night to sustain a premises anymore. One has to look at a range of activities and a range of means of generating income. The pub, when we took it back from the previous tenant, was actually found to be significantly structurally compromised, unfortunately. It was things we didn't know about, so works were extensive and actually went further than we had to do. That obviously creates noise and issues, and we can only apologise for the fact that during those works, there certainly were disturbances that residents faced. The total expenditure is in the region of approximately £400,000 plus, and that has gone on. New kitchen, which is currently actually being reinstalled. The works have been done in two stages. We're now doing the final stages to open this Friday again, so it's brand-new kitchen, new furnishings, fittings, tidy up throughout these structural works and actually a significant amount of work in the garden. What was there before is the same space as was here now, but in fairness, a lot of it was unusable by customers because of the state in which it had been kept, so a lot of work was done there. There were, and no one sitting here would disagree with me, some mistakes made in the manner in which the works were gone about, and we can only apologise for that, and we do so sincerely. But at the end of the day, we have a pub that we want to make work for the community. We need to attract custom to the pub, and a lot of work has been done to make it more appealing to a much wider group of people. There were some people who really liked the old pub and the fact it was very quiet, but I'm afraid that just was totally unsustainable. We have to look at how we could have a sustainable business going forward. So there you go. That's led us to here. We made an application originally earlier this year, which we then withdrew in July in order to hold a residents' meeting, once we had realised the strength of feeling of some of the issues that had come out. That meeting was held after the withdrawal of the application, and then we wrote to the residents, setting out what we were intending to do following that meeting in August, which led to an application being submitted in October. We made changes to the application from the original application, listening to some comments, but we did set out, for instance, some of the residents at the meeting said, 'Look, just don't apply for the later hours, we don't want you having later hours'. We reflected upon that very seriously. We reflected upon whether we could actually do that or whether indeed we felt actually applying for the later hours might help promote the objectives and actually help with the business. And in the end, we made a determination, the easy thing to have been done would have been to do nothing, but we've chosen to come back and ask you to grant the later hours for the reasons I'm going to set out, but it wasn't done lightly, I think is my point there. We did listen to the residents where we could, and indeed, you'll see that in the conditions. We have various representations that make a number of points. One of the points that was made was whether people should be allowed to drink in the smoking area once we closed down the rest of the garden and only have smokers. We thought long and hard about this in terms of what we're trying to do. We've moved all our customers away, so closing areas nearest to the residents. We would feel actually it would be more feasible to ask customers not to drink outside after 11 o'clock, so that's in the smoking area only. You've seen the condition that does all the other things, and we're happy to propose an additional condition that says that no drinks will be permitted in the smoking area after 11pm, and we can put signage up to deal with that. We think 9pm, which has been mentioned in a couple of the representations you'll have seen, is potentially a little bit early, but I think there were a couple of representations that make that point. We've considered it and we think actually 11 o'clock would be probably more fair in those circumstances. Other conditions we added in included not having films or TV screens in the garden or terrace area. I think there was some concern by the residents that was raised at the residents' meeting that we would have TV screens outside and show all the live sports, et cetera. We're not going through with that, and that's why that condition is there. We do want to hold the occasional event outside, and we've asked for the potential to have 15 occasions. We don't actually expect to use those 15 occasions, but we have asked for the potential. And the reason is this, as part of a community-style offer now, one has to be flexible as to what people want and demand in that community, and that includes events for local charities. It includes family days, it includes, you know, beer festivals nowadays, you know, the explosion of craft beer and cider that we all see. It means that people want to come and try new products, and these are things that we can offer that are good for the business. We're not saying they're not, we're not hiding behind that, but also are good for the people who want to come to the pub. So we've asked for those days on that basis. It allows for some flexibility. We're not saying every event would have music, we're not saying every event would go on late, but a little bit of flexibility to have events in the garden would also assist in what we're trying to do. We have an issue at the moment in terms of dispersal, and it was something that was raised earlier on and certainly in some of the other representations that were received previously as well, you know, people coming out of the car park, et cetera. Closing at the very modest hours we currently have means that actually kicking out time is the old-fashioned kicking out time, you know, the bell rings and we have to manage everyone out. The slightly later hours would allow for a slightly more gradual dispersal. This is something that we've seen in many other premises. It does work, and in fact, it's recognised in your policy, paragraph 10.1, that the additional time can actually assist with dispersal. And in this day and age, with people working very late hours, very flexible hours as well, we don't think midnight on a Friday and Saturday night for cessation of licensable activities is anything out of the ordinary. In fact, I'd say, from my experience, certainly for 10 years, midnight on Friday and Saturdays is probably now considered the norm or the bottom end of the norm for pubs opening, even in areas where there are residential properties. We do want to have indoor music events every now and then. As with any new business that starts up, there were some teething troubles, you've seen some of the complaints that came in. I was very pleased to see in the Environmental Protection Report that the complaints in relation to music stop after the 1st of July. I was also very pleased to see in the Environmental Protection Report that noise recording equipment was fitted in someone's home, and it doesn't explain where, who, for what times, wherever, but that it disclosed nothing of a public nuisance. That would suggest, certainly from our side, that those teething troubles are being worked through and the systems are being worked out to manage the premises. And obviously, when we reopen on Friday, we'll be very keen to ensure that those systems and the management manages everything to the expected levels. The new conditions, where you minded to grant this application, would be on the licence and they'd be held to those standards as well. So hopefully, we feel that we can work to assist on that. One of the things I would say is that certainly from our side, we would like to think that there can be a working relationship with all residents going forward in terms of any complaints being dealt with quickly, and we will try and certainly do our bit where we can to assist. A lot of mention, you will note, from the representations deals with planning and a planning condition and a planning management document with respect, and as this committee is fully aware, I know from being here before, planning is not an issue we can discuss at this hearing. It is a completely separate legislative body and it has its own purposes. The conditions we've proposed here include a management plan, so there is some reflection of the fact that there is a management plan that's being dealt with with the operators and their planning consultant and the planning team to get that sorted out. And indeed, the operators have told me today they'd be happy to publish that to the residents when it's finalised and all in place, but that's all I intend to say about planning. It's totally outside of the remit, really, of this community, of this committee. The car park, I just want to touch on this because it's another area that is raised quite regularly. It's a reasonable-sized car park, and indeed, works have been done to add more car parking spaces, which was something that was noted previously, the way it had been lined out was probably not the most efficient, so we've done that, we've added some car parking spaces. The car park, we allow to be used for families in the mornings, so you'll have seen reference to the local school, for instance. Mothers and fathers as well, absolutely, who drop off their kids for school often use our car park, and indeed, we're grateful for it, and indeed, we welcome them in as customers. We currently are entitled to open from 8am in the morning in any event, so the earlier morning alcohol sales is not opening the premises earlier, it's just simply reflecting the hours that we can open in any event. We don't expect, and given the nature of the premises, that it's going to attract a lot of drinkers who come regularly for an early drink, put it that way. It's not going to reflect, you know, sort of, I hate to use the example of Wetherspoons, but you know, the kind of people who want to go and have a pint of beer every morning before they get on their way or do what they do. It would be useful for us to have for sporting events, so morning sporting events, the summer rugby international spring to mind, but also, we don't see any reason why we do attract a lot of these, the people who drop off their kids, in particular mothers, who meet up and have a social gathering, why they couldn't have a mimosa or a, you know, a bit of champagne and orange juice for a special celebration on any particular morning. We don't see that that would undermine any of the licensing objectives, and that's why the application's there, really, not for any other particular purpose. It fits with the, you know, main... It fits with the, you know, mainly coffees and pastries that we get, but it, it offers a little bit more. And indeed, we are happy, and we made this point clear before, we're happy to work with the council to get any areas or verges where, uh, it's been dangerous for people to park, to get bollards put up, et cetera. There was a comment made that, that perhaps we'd offered to pay for it. I don't think that was ever offered. And we certainly offered to work with the residents and any other parties to see if we can get those areas, uh, bollarded so that people can't park there. But, but the reality is, and you, uh, as a committee, you'll be aware of this, we can only control what's within our immediate remit. If people take on, uh, either irresponsible or illegal activities themselves away from the premises, that the licensing act reflects that and actually says that's not something that's within the remit of the premises and therefore shouldn't be something held to the premises to deal with. It's always vile if, uh, you know, public urination and, and other offences like that. But, but again, we, you know, it's, it's not like we shut the toilets off an hour before we close the premises and send everyone on their way. Our facilities are open for all our customers if they, and, and we don't even know it's them, but, but if someone is urinating in public, that's their responsibility, that's their criminal offence and, and not the premises with respect. Um, and I was also pleased to see in some of the representations, uh, occasionally, um, acknowledgement of, uh, the works that have been done. So there's a reference to the car park and, and things being done. There was an acknowledgement that the application actually, following the residents' meeting, is probably slightly more suitable, even though there were still concerns. So, so there is some acknowledgement and we hope that that's the start of a, a better working relationship, um, with the residents and, and hopefully being able to, um, show them and demonstrate to them that, that the pub is, you know, is willing to work with them. Madam, that's the application i- in a nutshell. And I've dealt with the main comments, I think, in terms of the concerns raised about the application. Um, we would happily answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Walton. I'm sure my colleagues and I have lots of questions for you.
I'll start off, uh, if I may. Just interested, you talked about the dispersal management plan. The word in paragraph two on page thirty seven says, 'will be drawn up'. Is it not drawn up already before this application comes to, uh, this committee?
There, there has been a car park management plan that's been put in place. This dispersal management plan, obviously, until we've come before you and you've determined on the wording or whether you want to change how any plan looks, we can't draw up and send you a finalised plan because obviously you might choo- choose that there are elements that need to be changed or, or added to. We're happy to put any of the plans that are put in place, um, following where you minded to grant this application, in the, in the domain of the residents and obviously your officers, um, to work with them if it needs improving. What we actually find with these plans is they work best when they're movable feasts. So they actually react to things that happen in the process of a business growing and developing or this customer's coming in. The old conditions used to be, you will do this by this time, this will happen at X time. What we found was that meant you had to come back and vary the licence if X time proved not to be the right time for something to be done. So these management conditions give us more flexibility. They have been working on, uh, garden management plans, indeed, as, as I mentioned earlier, in respect of, of how they do things. And they have been working on a car park and dispersal plan, but they will be finalised, subject to anything that's added to here.
Fine. My questions are a bit random maybe, but the nine o'clock, uh, idea of closing the outside area, apart from smoking, uh, I was at a pub the other night when the smokers went out, cigarette in one hand, glass in the other. How you can stop that? People do not leave their glass in the restaurant, do they?
And, and this is what we were saying, is that we close the garden and the patio area down. So we close those down and everyone has to come into the terrace area. So, which is away from the residential properties here and is slightly more covered. So that's the smoking area. We propose to say that no one's allowed to take glasses out after eleven P M into that area. Um, it's a much smaller area and actually what you find is because people are smoking there, people tend only to congregate for those reasons. We can manage that area much more closely because it is immediately outside the premises. And actually we do find that when you work with your customers, when you say to them from ten thirty onwards, 'By the way, if you're going out for a cigarette, you're not going to be able to take your drinks out there shortly afterwards', people do tend to, uh, get into the habit of doing what you tell them because it's their pub and actually their responsibility if, if, if they choose not to do it.
Right, I note that. When I look at, uh, your plans, page forty four, uh, the ground floor plan, I notice that unlike the photographs that one of the residents has provided where the front door, the old front door of the pub, propped open by a fire extinguisher, but you seem to have deleted that door. Is that an emergency exit? Because there's a table now sitting right in front of what I presume is that door.
That's correct. That's going to be used as an emergency exit.
So you just move the table, chairs and everything else?
The, the, the table and chairs in there are purely indicative. As you, um, know from, from licensing plans, you only actually have to show fixed, uh, furnishings and solid things that would affect, uh, uh, that, that are solid and there permanently. The, the fact of the matter is that the person who drew that plan chose to put a table and chair there, but there is no table and chair there. It doesn't actually have to be on this plan. And, and those non-fixed furnishings are obviously capable of being moved around. Um, it's unfortunate that they chose to put it there, um, but, but that is a fire escape.
So the front door will remain and could possibly be propped open for ventilation with a fire extinguisher again?
Yes, I think we have actually included a condition in relation to closing doors and windows during regulated entertainment. So, so actually any time there's regulated entertainment, that's condition four. Those doors and windows would have to be closed.
Thank you for that. You talked about fifteen potential outside events. Is that in addition to tens, temporary event notices? That would make it rather more.
Absolutely. Um, we, we considered this long and hard. Temporary event notice, notices, you obviously have to, you, you, there, there are notice, but when you apply for it, or when you send your notice in, the E H O and police can object to that notice if they feel the event would undermine the licensing objectives. You can also have temporary event notices inside as well. So actually inside events where, by the, the event's nature, you would be less likely to cause an undermining of the licensing objectives could still be held. The, these fifteen events are purely for outside. Um, the reason we've gone down that route is that we wanted to be open and honest about the intentions of the premises, uh, uh, for this very reason. The Live Music Act workplace exemption would allow us to have live music outside whenever. Um, you don't need a licence for it. Um, and it doesn't even need to be on licensed premises, unlike the live music exemption for licensed premises. Um, it's a technicality, but we don't want to hide behind that. The fifteen event condition actually stands, uh, as, as a constriction on the licence because it's more than just relating to live music. So it is an enforceable condition. So that's why we've put that there. We don't intend to have, uh, probably up to fifteen. But again, because we define events as being anything outside of the ordinary, uh, operation of the premises, that, uh, an event could be a small thing in the afternoon for a couple of hours. It doesn't have to be an all-day, you know, cider festival.
But tens are still available?
Yes, one can't actually by law restrict tens on the premises.
I'm aware of that. I am aware. Green King, big company. You know, some of the complaints that have been raised in the past, um, do involve planning and I'll just mention a couple. Uh, hobbit houses and other constructions that were put up were eventually removed. But when I passed on August bank holiday, a bouncy castle had been erected where the hobbit house was. You can't have a bouncy castle, children, fresh air, sunshine, without creating one heck of a lot of noise. I just wonder what Green King's thinking is on, uh, the environment because the fox sits in a natural amphitheatre, the hills all the way around, sound echoes quite dramatically. And I'm sure the resident's going to talk about this later on. I'll come back to this particular thing, but I almost felt that the company was cocking a snoop at licensing law in the way they went about that particular event.
It's an interesting, uh, question, uh, and, and it poses a couple of, um, a couple of points that we need to make. First, first of all, Green King is a very large company, but Green King is split into two very distinct parts. The part we're dealing with here is the leased estate part, which is called pub partners. The other half of the business is a managed estate. The managed estate is where we employ directly all of the staff at the premises, the manager is our employee and won't betide them if they, uh, breach any of the licensing conditions or do anything that, that we consider shouldn't be done. The leased estate is, i- is predicated on the notion that we're a landlord and the operator is a, is the operator. They manage it. It's all their staff, it's all their work, they, they decide how they operate their premises. So that's not to say Green King don't take an interest, certainly not cocking a snoop. I think that would be unfair. We have to allow people to run their businesses. But I, I would say this, the, an event, let me phrase it this way, any noise is not by its generation a public nuisance. Because that would be an absurdity in any walk of life. Anywhere where people gather or indeed any business or, uh, you know, works or something like that, it's going to generate some kind of noise. It's what's reasonable in the circumstances for those, uh, for, for that type of business. Um, a pub garden is allowed to have people in it and people are allowed to have fun and chat and laugh and, and enjoy themselves. Um, part of running a pub now is, as I say, putting on community events now. Bouncy castles do create, I'm fully aware, a lot of noise and, and it's an issue that has come up before. But to have one or two events a year with a bouncy castle, I would suggest in and of itself would not create a public nuisance. It would be part of an event that has a public benefit. Now, we could, and we are looking at how we, uh, provide the information in advance so residents know what's coming, so residents are aware of anything like that, so that they can make any provision they want to either hopefully join in. But if not, uh, to know when it's coming, to know what times it's coming for, et cetera. We say, and, and we don't hide behind this, when, when we started here, we made some mistakes and we're still, I think, in a way, paying for those mistakes early on now. But it's all a learning process. Um, but certainly no one would ever, I, I would suggest, be cocking a snoop here. We, we withdrew one application to have a meeting with the residents for that very purpose, to engage with them, um, which I would suggest demonstrates the, the willingness of us to work with, with residents.
Fine, you, you talked about consultation. Uh, is this going to be an ongoing process? What, what are your, uh, plans for engaging with the people who are your immediate neighbours and who's, we will hear from shortly, I'm sure, and come back to that later on. But what are your plans for future consultation?
The plan as, as it, as it always is, is effectively an open door policy as the residents would like. So if residents want to come and complain and speak to someone, they can. If they want to come to Green King, uh, Nick's here and would happily, you, you know, make his number available for, for any resident who wants to, to raise an issue. Um, it's not a case of, and, and it's something I know that some of the residents feel is the case, that you were to grant this, we'd close the doors. That's simply not the way it works. A pub doesn't work that way and in fact it's the only way to, to guarantee a business will fail. But certainly a, uh, an open door policy where everyone feels they're in, entitled to have their say is, is the way we'd like to proceed. If things develop and there are reasons why that can't happen, then we'll have to look at, um, more formal means, but certainly we don't want to stop the residents having a say.
Fine, thank you. I'll come back, uh, after the residents have spoken and other members have had their chance.
Thank you, Mr. Ishwood. I suspect you have some questions?
Thank you, yes. If I could pick up some points that you've made, uh, Mr. Warren. You, you referred to the previous tenant, which I think you said was the lady who clearly ran Nordley House. Can you tell us when Morgan took over?
No, is it November twenty sixteen, councillor?
Thank you. You also made reference to one of the reports here, which the last recorded date is the first of July, saying that was the last noisy event. So could you help us a little perhaps by looking at page fifty seven, where we have a list of incidents since then? Perhaps you could help us, let's just take two or three of these. The fifth of August, um, twenty-three forty-five until midnight, shouting in the gardens till well after midnight. The twelfth of August, oh-two-twenty, music playing with the windows open, loud voices. And then, if you go over the page, September the seventh, loud music playing until well after midnight. Doesn't exactly paint a very good picture, does it?
Uh, no, and, and if I may just clarify, I didn't say that there was no nuisance, uh, no noise after that. What I actually said was referring to the environmental protection officer's report. There were no complaints raised, uh, after the first of July. That's why I specified the first of July date. The, um, event on the, uh, the August event, which is, eh, we, we do know about, was a temporary event notice for a private, uh, party that was held at the premises. Um, it was, I think, sister-in-law, uh, birthday party. Again, lessons obviously will be learnt if there are, uh, issues that were raised about that. Um, in terms of the seventh of September, um, we did have a look back and we're not sure there was anything particularly, uh, uh, particular going on. What we would say actually is that the last live music at the premises, if I can justify my date here, was the third of November, so fairly recently, uh, where there were no complaints at all, from what we know. And certainly no one suggested that, that that hadn't been dealt with properly. What, what we're saying is that where we have made mistakes in the past, we're trying to learn from them and actually manage things better. Um, so the third of November was the last live music, I think, uh, that, that, that we had at the premises and we certainly didn't receive any complaints and we certainly weren't notified of any from the E H O.
Perhaps, I mean, I don't know if you can help us at all on, on the twelfth of August, why was it uncontrolled at, at Piers from papers until oh-two-twenty?
Obviously people have different opinions as to what was controlled and what was uncontrolled. I don't think the management would say that it was uncontrolled, it was a controlled and managed event. That it caused some disturbance is, I'm not, I'm not trying to diminish that in any way. But there is a big difference between saying it was a completely uncontrolled event, which we would certainly have an issue with, and saying that there was some noise that was caused in that event, uh, during that temporary event notice, that, that may have caused some disturbance. We will learn from the bits we can learn from and, and move forward and, and ensure that they, they don't happen again. We would happily sit down with the people who make those, who've made those complaints and, and try and work out exactly what can be done to, to ensure there aren't any problems.
Thank you. Now, the, the other thing you, you made reference to is a, a gradual dispersal. I go back a long time, I'm afraid, into the past when I was a police officer and licensing ended at ten-thirty. Unless you're a coastal county, when it was eleven o'clock. Now in, in my town of Hazelmeir, there was a pub right on the border that closed at ten-thirty and then a hundred yards away, there was one that was in West Sussex at eleven o'clock and everybody just walked down the road in a big line to the next pub. They didn't disperse. And from what I see when I'm in pubs, they don't, people, the later you open, the late, you stay open, the later they come in and stay until the end. What evidence is that there is going to be this gradual dispersal and people were just, 'Well, that one's still open, we'll all go there'?
I, I too remember the sixty-four act actually and did a lot of work under the sixty-four act licensing before it changed. Um, and the one thing that wa- that, that occurred at eleven o'clock was everyone got dumped out on the streets and they all queued for nightclubs that were open till two o'clock and we did the same cycle again and again and again. Uh, the fox is in a position where you can't just walk out of the pub and walk down to a pub three doors down, uh, and stay for later hours. Uh, the reality is if people want to go out for a big night out, let's call it that, so stay out quite late, they have to make plans in advance to do so. And from the fox, that would mean actually getting some transportation into, uh, one of the major towns around and, and going out for a night out there. So the customers we're getting are the customers who tend to want to have a quieter night out. So the customers we're getting are the customers who tend to want to have a quieter night or start a night at the pub and go elsewhere. Those that are going elsewhere tend to leave earlier because they need to get into town, et cetera, et cetera. Those who are staying till the end are the ones who actually just want a quiet night to finish their drinking piece and not to be ushered out the door at 11:20 on the dot. So we're not saying there won't be people leaving at 12 or 12:15, et cetera, but we're pretty sure that there will be a more gradual dispersal because of those times. And it does help, certainly in terms of the management of the premises, to do so. And as I say, your policy, if you wanted to look at evidence, makes this point. The Licensing Authority recognises that the guidance emphasises that the aim through promotion of four licensing objectives should be to reduce the potential for concentrations of and a slower dispersal of people from licensed premises through flexible opening times. It may be important to ensure that large concentration of people do not leave the premises at the same time and that's directly quoted from your policy. So it does, if you like, provide evidence prima facie of, you know, that it's acknowledged this does work.
Can you help us by telling us exactly what Green King will have in place to ensure that the conditions are monitored and complied with?
As I say, Green King don't manage the pubs, so we have to be very careful here. And I cannot say publicly on the record that Green King have any direct management control for very obvious reasons. For a start, it would be a breach of the lease for me to do so. However, ultimately, these are the consequences. If the licence were to be called in for review because of poor management and if a committee sat on, like you are today, and determined that poor management had led to an undermining of the licensing objectives, to such an extent that you pulled back hours or even in the worst circumstances revoked the licence, then things can be done by Green King in terms of conditions and obligations on the lease. What we do do and what we always do is look to work with our operators. So we will assist them where we can. There is, for instance, a Green King guide. It's called the Blue Book, or it used to be called the Blue Book anyway when I wrote it, which is about 200 pages of guidance on how to operate a licensed premises. So it includes things like dispersal policies. It includes things like notices for customers leaving quietly, challenge 25 policies, all those kind of things. Those are things that we can work on, is, if you like, our experience helping with the management. But at the end of the day, it is the management of the premises, the operators, who have the ultimate control. But that doesn't stop the fact that every condition on that licence, if it's breached, is a criminal offence and liable to prosecution with unlimited fines now and up to six months in prison.
Just come back if I may, taking the point that councillor Knowles has made about management and noise. I look at these letters that we have from residents and where one, we're told at 1 o'clock in the morning, complain music and noise are due to a private party in the pub and therefore didn't have to abide by their own policy. Surely that's bad management on Green King's part or on the licence holder's part. If they want to be good neighbours, that's not the way you respond, is it? Question.
I wasn't there, so I can't say exactly how anyone responded.
Nor was I.
Exactly. And people who are frustrated see things that don't happen immediately to help them in a certain light compared to perhaps the way it was presented at the time. We don't have the evidence before us. And that's part of the problem we have here, is a lot of the things that are said, that there is no evidence, if you like, that you can put a finger on to say, to make a judgement about it. And that's a problem we have as well, which is why we're saying and have been saying, we want to work with residents so that we get to a situation where if there is an issue, we can work out exactly why and how we can help it. But the reality is there was a party. We know there was a party because we applied for the temporary event notice. The temporary event notice means that no conditions on the licence apply in terms of it. So it may be that that's what was meant. Why aren't you doing X? That's on your licence. Well, actually, the reality is we don't have to comply with that. How it was put, how it was presented and anything that came off the back of it is conjecture from our point of view in terms of the evidence, I'm afraid. But rest assured, we do learn from these things. These are not... We don't want to have a situation where everyone feels that the pub is not working with them. We've had enough of that, candidly. I went to the residents' meeting. I stood up at the front of a residents' meeting and it was probably one of the hardest residents' meetings I've gone through. There is a lot of bad feeling that has to be said, but that at some stage has to be put in a context of then and we have to look at what we're doing now.
When you say that, I've never been to one of these licensing meetings where I've seen so many of the local residents present either. So I think you understand that. But there is a thing running through here and you can work out who they are, but there are two young ladies with families who talk about intimidation. That I find quite sad. But also, you know, one of the neighbours who says people can see into the bedroom of her property. What are you going to do to ensure that this doesn't happen, whether it's 9 o'clock in the evening or 10 o'clock in the morning? What's the management style there, please?
Again, I think we take quite a strong position on the notion that there's been intimidation and were Green King to find out that there had been intimidation by their lessees. That would be taken very seriously indeed. So that someone has alleged intimidation, again, we would take seriously. But we've not, and I can say this, we've not found in any of our dealings with these people that they would be of that kind of nature. Now, I can see Mr. Cross at the end laughing. He has a particular relationship with them that I'm sure he'll explain to you in some length. That, however, has been taken a number of stages further and indeed we're more than happy to address you on that. But I think you might want to hear from him first and then we can come back on that point. When it comes to seeing in someone's window, we'd happily go and have a look and see exactly where and how and what the kind of, you know, what can be seen through the window and then we can take action. But again, you know, you could put up all the fences in the world and you never know quite what's happening.
I almost say so that that's crossing into the planning regime, which you've already said you don't want to go there. So we'll avoid that one. But no, I'll come back to this later on. Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. Perhaps I could ask a couple of questions now. I am extremely concerned on behalf of the local residents. They are entitled, for many reasons, to enjoy the amenity of their own homes and their gardens. And I don't, I have never been into this particular public house and I live at the other end of the borough, but I have passed it on many occasions. And I did actually look at the website. I don't know whether you've looked at the website, but I have to say, on the side, pictures, films of people having a very good time in the outside area. A lot of noise and it appeared to go on for a very, very long time. There were lots and lots of people, lots and lots of children there. It must, because of the nature and the close proximity of the neighbours, have been extremely difficult for them. You've indicated that you have no direct control as a company, but I do think that you have a real responsibility to actually consider the neighbours living in the area. And I would like to ask you, I'm not wanting to stray into planning, but nevertheless, there was this condition that you came up with a noise plan and another plan. I think they were both turned down on the 21st of October. Perhaps you could advise me, perhaps you're not in a position to advise me, how far you are along actually coming up with another plan and bearing in mind, we have heard that Green King is a large and presumably well-respected company. I would have expected you to have been in a position to submit plans which would have been acceptable. Thank you.
I think there's a few points in there. We accept that running a pub near residential properties has its own unique challenges and it's one that many, many pubs go through. Councillor Ishwood may be interested to hear. I've been at hearings where I've seen significantly more residents come out for various reasons. Once, actually, we had to move a hearing into a canteen to accommodate everyone. I think there were 75 people turned up. So, you know, the scale of feeling is not an only indicator. What we had before was a pub that was dying on its haunches. It wasn't trading well. It was empty. It wasn't selling much beer. It was falling apart. We were lucky enough to have some people willing to come in and invest significant amounts of money. I mean, 400,000 plus is a fairly conservative estimate on what's been spent. Part of that, obviously, is to try and make the pub better. The success of the pub is part of the problem in that you have a busy garden now and a busy place. But to suggest that immediately that is a bad thing, I think is probably a little unfair. The balance has to be struck, absolutely. But a public nuisance isn't just caused by people being in a pub garden. The management plan that's being dealt with, the guys have instructed a very senior planning consultant to work with them on getting that plan dealt with. Indeed, I think the planning consultant used to work at this council. They are working tirelessly with the planning officer to get the management plan to a stage where they feel it's fit and proper, but it's only right that that takes the amount of time it takes to be done. One has to take into account all of the factors. You know, the planning officer doesn't want to simply say, well, you can't have a garden there because that would be completely unreasonable at one end and at the other end they can't say, well, you can do whatever you want so long as you don't overcrowd it at the other end. What we've done, and I think this is a very reasonable and proportionate thing to do, is say, look, the nearest parts to the residential properties, we will close earlier than lots and lots of pub gardens do. 9pm is an early closing time for those areas. Many pubs have no restrictions on their gardens at all. Some pubs do have restrictions, but they tend to be later than that. 9 is one of the earliest I can think of for a pub garden. And that was a step that we volunteered and indeed some of the residents have said in their representations, no, we're glad to see that that's been volunteered. At least you know at that point that that's when the garden's going to be cleared out. And as I say, that condition is on the face of the licence. It would be fully enforceable. We do understand that there's a tension with residents as well and trying to get the balance right. And that's why I say it's a, you know, this isn't the end of the story by any means. This is, I would hope, a line in the sand where we can all agree that going forward after this, we try and work together perhaps more effectively.
Thank you. I was somewhat surprised to hear you say that you felt that the company has very little control and perhaps indicated a lack of interest in having any control over what happens at the public house. Now, could you explain to me, the indication regarding the noise, and I'm sorry to keep on coming back to the noise, but this is of major concern and inconvenience to the local residents. The proposal is to put some notices on the walls, asking people leaving or coming to the pub to actually have some respect, if you like, for the local residents. Do you think that this is sufficient? How can you possibly believe that you're going to be able to control the noise levels if you open the public house later? I know you've indicated that, I think that you believe that actually people will leave in a more managed way. Do you not feel that everybody will just be leaving later than they were planning to and that the noise will be worse for the local residents? I think, if I may say so, you do have a responsibility to the local residents.
I hope you don't feel I've ever said that Green King does not have a responsibility or feel a responsibility deeply, but the business itself of leasing pubs has a certain consequence. And that's the way it works at all leased pubs. What we do is we work very closely with our publicans, with our licensees, to try and ensure that we don't cause a disturbance. I don't think it's fair to characterise the conditions that we've put on this application as being simply a couple of notices and let's leave it at that. If you go through them and when you do go through them, I'm sure you will very carefully when you deliberate, you will see there much more than that. And they tie us to a course of action that should be proportionate in terms of managing these issues. And also, again, we have to be careful here. The nature of who and who doesn't respect each other in terms of neighbours can go both ways. And to suggest that anyone who goes to a pub disrespects the neighbours is wrong, with respect. Occasionally, people do things that are antisocial. All we can do is if they're on our pub, when they do that, is bar them from the pub, take action against them that's reasonable and fitting for whatever their action is. If it's someone laughing a bit loud outside a bit late with their friends, telling them to come in might be the appropriate course of action. If they refuse to do so, barring them may be what you need to do. But outside of that immediate control, I think it's an unfair characterisation to say that people who go to a pub are the problems and all people who go to pubs are problematic and not take into account that actually that's probably just simply not quite the case. You know, occasionally people will cause an issue. What we hope to do is manage them more closely by having a longer dispersal. Yes, some people will leave later, but in the same way that closing now at 11 o'clock, not everyone waits till 11 o'clock to go home. Some people do leave earlier for whatever reason. They want to get up earlier in the morning. I mean, that's the way it goes. So it helps with dispersal. It's not a panacea, but it does certainly assist. And the dispersal plan allows for effective management of those people when they leave. And that's what we're willing to put our word on, is the conditions, which are very robust.
Thank you. I wonder if I could ask the type of events that you're putting on? I did look at the website and there is a list of events that you're planning. Perhaps you could go into a little bit more detail about those. And also, with regard to music, I did read an indication that a maximum of two pieces of band, if you like. On the website, the bit that I saw, there were clearly three pieces plus a singer. So is that a conflict?
Sorry, Chair, I'm not sure where you take the only two people will be. It may be in the current conditions, but it's certainly not in the new conditions. And in any event, actually, the Licensing Act, Live Music Act, actually means those conditions have no effect up to 11 o'clock at night in any event. The reality is actually you can have a two-piece band that are incredibly loud and you can have a five-piece jazz band who are actually quite quiet. The number of musicians is not necessarily an indicator. It's the two in a bar rule, as you'll know, came from the 64 Act and sometimes got transferred over onto old licenses. In terms of entertainment that's going to be held, the band on the 3rd of November, can you tell me a bit about them? And in terms of where they were put in the pub, where were they located?
Mr. Mead, would you mind using your microphone, please? Thank you.
I do apologise, sorry. They were sighted in the, essentially the corner opposite the bar on the left-hand side as you stand on the road, the left-hand corner.
And in terms of management of that band, the manager, I take it, would have been in charge of ensuring they weren't playing at levels that would have caused a disturbance. That's part of his responsibility, is it?
And part of the sound check.
And in terms of a sound check, you do checks to ensure that the levels are?
Internal and external to the premises.
Thank you. With regard to the events, and I include in this perhaps televised run- With regard to the events, and I include in this perhaps televised rugby, where you get people enthusiastically joining in, there is a requirement that the windows should be closed, the windows and doors, but there seems to be a huge amount of evidence that that is not happening. How do you propose to enforce that? Thank you.
Again, it becomes part of the management protocol for any events or any larger gathering to ensure that the conditions are complied with. Obviously, the condition saying no doors or windows open during regulated entertainment is an enforceable condition insofar as, you know, it sits on the licence and you can deal with that. People coming and going during a rugby match, you know, you hope, again, that people are fairly sensible when they're inside, but part of being a community pub is that people want to come and gather and watch these events. Certainly, in terms of management, because it's been raised, and we've seen it here, that people felt they were disturbed by that at, I think it was 8.30 in the morning when the rugby was held, I think it was the Autumn Internationals, wasn't it? Again, we would work to ensure that there was a decent management of that. It should be as simple as keeping doors and windows shut, and it should be as simple as having someone designated when they do glass collecting to check doors and windows at the time, you know, decent notices, that kind of thing. What we can't say is that on any given second, someone hasn't opened a door, because people will come and go, but what we do is try and manage those things as best we can, like all other premises do. That it proved popular, I think, is probably a demonstration of the success of the pub and something we're trying very hard to work with, to ensure that it doesn't cause a disturbance. But, you know, the success of the pub, I think, is a positive as well, you know, given where we were November last year. And I think that should be taken into account, at least acknowledged that we are trying to do the right thing as we grow the business.
If I could now ask the responsible authority, our Environmental Control Department, if you would like to address the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our main concern, as I say, was the amount of complaints that we had been receiving. And some of the questions have been answered by yourself asking the questions as well. My concern is they keep mentioning the written policies, of which we've not seen any management policies or anything like that, so we don't know how they're going to manage these policies. They say they're going to shut the garden at 9 o'clock. How is that area going to be closed off? I know there's a gate, I've been there myself, I know there's a gate to stop them from going up to the cabanas. However, at the front of the pub, next to the car park, there is a terraced area with lots of seating. The smoking area appears to be to the front, to the roadside of the pub. So what's to stop them just sitting in the seated area? Is there going to be another fence there with a gate to stop them using that bit after 9 o'clock? I want to ensure that the local residents aren't submitted to any potential statutory nuisance, which I think could potentially arise from the variation that they've asked for.
Do you have any questions at all? Any questions?
No, just one quick question. You have an objection to which bit of the proposal?
Just in the question of public house.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Warren, would you like to respond now?
I think the only point that was raised, that perhaps raised a concern, is how you manage the smoking bit versus the other bit of the terrace down below, because as we know, you can lock the garden, the main garden, off. It's actually something that is done currently and is done through management of people. You tell them that area is going to be closed off, they stop using that area, and then someone goes out and makes sure that they don't use it. If it was necessary, if it proved it had to be done in the future, we could look at roping it off or using barriers of some kind, but actually, we have found that telling people... Sorry, yeah, the area where the smoking bit is, actually, when you look at it from the front, looks fairly different from the other terracy bit. So moving people in, they do tend to take a... So far, they seem to have been reacting to that. As I say, if it needed barriers or anything like that, I've just had it confirmed, we'd happily put some, you know, those little rope barriers or whatever and a sign saying it can't be used, but, you know, we've not had that problem so far.
Thank you. Could I now call councillor Lear, please?
Thank you, Madam Chairman and members, for the opportunity to speak. As a councillor for Farnham Bourne, the Fox Pub sits within my ward, and I've been no stranger to the ongoing issues of late as a consequence of an increased volume of trade at the premises. For the record and for the applicant's benefit, I'd like to state that I'm generally very supportive of regeneration schemes regarding public houses nationwide and locally, as we've seen just far too many of them close over the last decade. I was hopeful that this scheme would befit the community of the Bourne very well, and the assertions that were made at the outset from the new management team were comforting. However, it wasn't long before my email inbox started filling up, and since this regeneration scheme started last year, there has been a constant stream of complaints made against it with regard to the persistent accusations of breaches of the planning conditions agreed in the planning approval notice in March 2017. Mr Warren, I'm very aware that the planning conditions are not necessarily relevant with regard to licensing issues, but there certainly are correlations, in my opinion, with regard to public nuisance issues and noise that has been emanating from the premises. I've also been made aware that there are potential ongoing investigations with regard to these allegations of breaches. However, more importantly, I would like to highlight that the current management team do not seem to be able to cope with the existing and already significantly increased amount of trade that they have already generated. Regularly, there are vehicles illegally parked around the Fox Pub, and the litter of beer bottles in hedgerows has grown. Noise associated with a mass exodus at or around midnight compound the ongoing problems. There are also reports of urination in people's driveways locally, which I am very simply eager to resolve and thus avoid repetition. I do take Mr Warren's point on the licensing objective regarding this point, but I would like to simply refer to Newton's Third Law, that for every action, there is an equal and opposite reaction. If I was to seek a satisfactory solution to the ongoing problems, I would argue that the items conditioned 9 and 10 within the planning application approval regarding noise in particular are now also attached on to the licence. It is my opinion that noise, in slight contrast to Mr Warren's view, can be a public nuisance which is a licensing objective, and Condition 9 is touched upon in the application, but much more loosely, as is shown at page 37 of the agenda. To be specific, and again, for the record, it is written on Condition 9, and it states that 'no sound reproduction or amplification equipment, including public address systems, tannoids, loudspeakers etcetera which is audible, outside the site boundary shall be installed or operated on the site.' This is conditioned within planning due to Policy D1 of the local plan, and it is relevant because it's put in place to protect the amenity of the surrounding residents. And likewise, Condition 10 is also relevant to Policy D1 because it's equally beneficial in protection of the surrounding residents. It limits the use of outside cabanas and licensed bar activity outside to 2100 hours, and this should be accepted in line with the application. By applying these two relevant conditions to the licence would also ensure that the existing, or indeed any future, management team pay appropriate heed to the obligations of their licence objectives, particularly with regard to public nuisance caused by noise emanating from the premises. As a consequence, this would also demonstrate that they are serious about their commitments to the local residents. May I just continue, please, Chair? To summarise, I would like to particularly make the point that I do not think it reasonable to expect to be able to constantly contravene agreements with authorities and never be brought to account. To offer any extensions to the licensing arrangements today would merely be endorsing this approach to a misdemeanor and be akin to offering a persistently naughty child a biscuit or two to keep them quiet. I would urge the committee to send a clear message to all licence holders, not just the proprietors of the Fox Pub, that we are serious as a borough about protecting the harmony and the tranquility of our residential areas. To grant any extensions to the current operating hours would exacerbate an already existing, recognisable and almost indisputable problem, and would be sending...
Councillor, could you wind up, please, now?
It would send a message to the contrary, Madam Chairman, and in my opinion, the wrong message. At the very least, I would urge the committee not to grant any extensions to the Fox Pub at this stage. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Hughes, do you have anything you wish to add at this particular stage with regard to licensing?
Not at this stage, Madam Chairman.
Thank you very much. Now we move to the residents we have with us. I'm presuming that you are in the main objectives, because I have received a huge copies of all of your correspondence, and I know that my colleagues have received the correspondence as well, and we have read and taken very careful note. There are a number of people here who I suspect will wish to speak. Has one person been nominated perhaps to go first, who could perhaps give details that might speak on behalf of the majority of you? However, I will give other people the opportunity, if they wish to raise a different point, to speak later. I know the gentleman here, and I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch...
Could you just use your microphone, please, Mr Cross? Thank you ever so.
Firstly, my apologies for eating, I'm diabetic and I do need to eat occasionally when I have to. My name's Simon Cross, I think I'm well-known to most people in this room for all sorts of reasons. I've lived in Stream Farm Close for 35 years, and I and all the residents have hardly had any issues with the Fox until the current tenant took over. There is a history of broken promises given at meetings with local residents. Councillor Lear made a number of things, I'm afraid I'm going to ever so slightly repeat some of them, but not a lot, I hope. Particularly, the issues around planning, which I know is not directly related here, but planning around noise and public nuisance is. And the Fox are in breach of a number of conditions that directly relate to that. There's no noise management plan in existence, it was supposed to be in place by August the 7th. They've been too rejected since then, it's still not there. How can we possibly accept that they are operating a premise in a responsible manner without a noise management plan? And it's quite intolerable that there is no such management control over these matters. A number of other noise issues were mentioned, in particular, the condition about no amplified sound outside of the site boundaries. Piers made a very eloquent presentation, he mentioned the music event on the 3rd of November. Well, the music event one week before then was clearly audible 100 yards outside the site property, and the doors and windows were open. I reported this myself to the authorities, so the fact that somebody says there is no record of that is simply not quite true, it may have got lost in the ether somewhere. There are a number of evidences, items of evidence, which I believe some of my friends here have, pictures, sound recordings of some of these events, which I hope the committee will see when they have the opportunity to speak. Councillor Isherwood made the very interesting, raised the very interesting question as to whether these 15 outside events were in addition to 10s. Yes, they clearly are, but they're also in addition to what's mentioned in the application of regular occurrences, including, and I quote, 'Sunday afternoon music'. So therefore, there are 52 music events possible in the year, one on every Sunday, plus 15, plus 10. This is an intolerable set of noise that is going to be penetrating our residential lives. We therefore would like to ask that there are a number of conditions placed on the licence with immediate effect, to take account of the fact that the Live Music Act has actually meant that some of the extant, the conditions that were there, have fallen. We would ask that no music films or other such events are carried on in outside areas. We would ask that inside entertainment precludes discos and karaoke. We would ask that the condition on no amplified sound to be audible outside the site boundaries is transferred to the licence, so that it is in parallel with the planning conditions. It is a nonsense that two parts of local government would prohibit two different conditions on a premise, particularly when they are supposed to be working to the same end, i.e. noise management. We'd ask that the hours of operation and sale of alcohol are not extended later at night than those currently in operation, although I personally would not object to there being an additional hour extension on the Sunday of a bank holiday weekend or at New Year. That is reasonable, it is a commercial premise, and we would all like to enjoy it. This establishment is a village pub, it's not a town centre entertainment venue, and the tenants are on record as wishing for it to be community-based. Please listen to the community and design your establishment to meet its needs, and not those people that are currently driving from miles away to frequent it. We'd ask that licensing hours are not extended earlier in the day than currently in place. The establishment is adjacent to an infant school, and in our opinion, it's not appropriate that persons are arriving and departing for the consumption of alcohol before and during school start hours. I noted that in Piers's initial presentation about the extension of licensing hours, he talked about the only extension being sought was an extension later in the evening, he then actually did make the point later on that they were looking at it earlier in the day. The issue of the smoking area, we feel very strongly that the smoking area should only be for smoking. It is all very close, it is all very close to the neighbouring properties. If the smoking area is allowed to have drinks in it as well till 11 o'clock at night, then the whole purpose of closing the outside area is defeated. Yes, I have observed people in the smoking area only after hours, so you seem to be policing that reasonably well, thank you. But it really, really would be a travesty to allow people to eat and drink out there, or at least drink out there after 9 o'clock as well, because the noise, simply, it's only 10 metres away from the neighbouring properties, so to move people 10 metres simply has no effect. Those conditions we ask for simply because the noise and nuisance emanating from the premise has been demonstrated, as I and others have repeatedly documented, that this is a problem. It means that people can't go to sleep at a decent time of night, and that includes You make a great deal of these dispersal properties, these management plans, etcetera, etcetera. I fail to see how the committee can possibly judge an application without those being in front of it, because we have no idea what is going to be in there, what they are going to put down as self-policing documents. The non- The noise management plan I have personally asked to see twice, it has been declined on both occasions. We aren't even as residents allowed to see a draft of these documents. This is supposed to be a pub that is working with us, it is not. I think that is all I have to say at this time. I would ask a number of questions, but I think I've made my point. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Cross. Mr Vaughan, do you wish to respond at this particular time, or would you prefer to listen to all of the comments from the residents here?
I think it would probably make sense for me to just make one submission afterwards, if the committee's happy with that. Having read through all the representations, I'm aware of what the comments are likely to be. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. So, what I was trying to say earlier was the point about this whole 2am party. If you want evidence, I was there, I don't like being talked to like that. The management of the pub on that particular occasion was inexcusable. They're running a pub, saying it's a private party and we can do what we want to whatever time of the day. I had to be up at work at six to go off and do what I do. So that was the point I was trying to make earlier. So, in response to some of the points that Mr Vaughan made earlier, the extension of ours, I think we've done that to death a little bit. The first floor, to extend the licence to the first floor, the first floor of this pub is directly opposite my bedroom window. In actual fact, I occasionally wave at people when they're having their lunch, including friends of mine. It's single glazed, the windows are often open. Previous to current management team refurb, it was residential for the landlady and her team that were there, so it was a residential area above the pub. It's since been converted into a dining room where we had a residents' meeting, which was entertaining. So, yeah, it's directly opposite my bedroom window. Anything that comes out of that room comes straight across the road, and I have to keep my windows and blinds drawn to try and prevent that noise coming through. So, on a personal level, that's a public nuisance. Extending the licensing area of the pub to those upper rooms would just increase that, and we haven't really mentioned that previously. The range of activities, I'm not entirely sure what the Fox wants to do. Some very nice literature came through our letterboxes introducing the new gastropub. This is at the same time as the sign outside saying, 'Every Friday, we're going to have live music from here on in'. You're one or the other, either you're a gastropub or you're an entertainment pub. Why should I have to put up with music every Friday? That restricts what I do with my Fridays. The state of the garden, the garden wasn't unkempt, it was, it had a lot of healthy vegetation, and that was covered in planning previously. That work was done before planning was granted. The planning chair mentioned that during that planning meeting. The current management tend to do what they want and then ask for forgiveness afterwards, rather than the other way round, which is my understanding of the way we should work. The residents' meeting, it wasn't a meeting, as far as I could tell, to get any kind of opinion from us, it was platitudes. And then we were asked to leave so that the representatives of Green King can sit down and talk with representatives from the council in private. Nothing was laid out there, there was no meat on the bones at all, and there still isn't. Smoking areas, it's not enforceable, you can't ask people in a pub to leave their drinks inside the pub and go out and smoke. Anyone that believes that is, I'm sorry, they're misguided, and they're trying to mislead Up to 15 outside events in a year, why? That's more than one a month. I have no choice about when they are. You can put a temporary event notice in to notify me when you want it to happen, but we've already got a notice outside that says every Friday, we're going to have music. As far as the dispersal plan goes, just a suggestion, why not stop people coming in after a certain time? Let those that are already in there drink until closing time, but if you want to, as a dispersal plan, stop additional people coming in after, say, 10 o'clock and just let those that are in there drink, that would, to me, be a good way of dispersing people over a longer period of time. And if anybody doesn't want to go out drinking in the Fox until 10, that's a little bit unusual. The noise levels, the management have been very canny. There were a number of complaints earlier in the year, particularly around the screenings of the Rugby World Cup. That woke me up on two occasions. I don't like being woken up at eight o'clock in the morning by people screaming. My understanding was there were actually some members of the local constabulary had to go in and talk to the management about the children being in the pub when alcohol was being served, about that as well, but that's all hearsay. My main concern is public nuisance from the noise. It's an old building, all the windows are single glazed, anything that happens in there comes straight across the road and it bounces all around. Any kind of amplified sound, regardless of whether the windows and doors are shut, which they're not on a regular basis, I hear it in my house and there's nothing I can do about it. I've lived there for 11 years, until last November, I had cause to have a conversation with a landlady twice, and on both instances, I walked over to the pub, I knew Sam very well, she apologised straight away, the noise levels were turned down, and that, you know, she wasn't aware that it was going to be a problem. That level of communication with the current management just isn't there. They don't appear to have any regard for anything other than trying to make money out of it. And that's kind of all I've got to say about it. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr Gill. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm very anxious that you should all have the opportunity to have your say, but first of all, I would like to ask my colleagues here whether they have any questions that they would like to ask Mr Cross or Mr Gill about what they've said.
Thank you.
Hi there, I live directly next door-
May I ask your name?
Oh yes, Amy Howanson, and I live directly next door. It's my bedroom, or it was my children's bedroom, which I had to move them out of the bedroom, because their customers can see directly into my property and my garden. The garden is now, before it was a wooded area, the garden was much more, was further away, and they've decided to extend and enlarge the garden right up to our sort of boundary fence, which is just unbearable, the noise from the garden is completely unbearable. I've got two small children, I run a childminding business, and the fact that, you know, you can see directly into my bedroom is, I think, unacceptable. They are not willing to do anything about it, they said they would, and they've basically withdrawn that, and said I need to go direct to head office, which I did, and nothing further has happened. I mean, the noise, the bouncy castle directly the other side, I have photographs of people looking in my window, I have photographs of the bouncy castle, I have plenty of photographs that I can show you. But the bouncy castle on the other side of the fence is unbearable. The thought, so now that there's an outside bar, the thought of them being able to serve alcohol from 8.30 in the morning out there is, yeah, I object, I really object to that. You know, I appreciate that they are closing the garden at nine o'clock, well, so they say they're going to, I've not yet seen that happen. So, and I don't think I should have to complain, every time there's something that happens, I don't feel like I should have to complain. And they are, they don't communicate with us as neighbours, they've got no interest in developing any kind of relationship with us whatsoever. It's been very, very difficult, you know, we've been lived there for seven and a half years, we never had any issues previously. The, another concern I have is the fact that they're going to have CCTV cameras in their garden, which I understand is great for public safety, but because you can see directly into my property and garden, and I have small children, and I look after other people's children, I have an issue with them potentially recording what's going on in my property, I think that's unacceptable. The regular occurrence of live music on a Sunday, I know we've covered that, but again, I think 15 plus 10 plus every Sunday is unacceptable. And yeah, just the noise, the noise, there's no sense of community, they've got no interest in their neighbours' welfare whatsoever, and I can vouch for that. The residents' meeting was held while we were away, we were given four days' notice, so we were not able to attend. I was asked for details, they did not provide me any details, and I, yeah, it's just very unbearable. So thank you very much for, you know, considering us as residents, it's appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Could I ask first of all, my colleagues, do you have any questions that have been raised?
Sorry, there's one point I forgot to mention, plans. The plans that went to planning aren't the same as the plans that are on the licence application, and they're not the same as what the building physically looks like at the moment. They're only slightly different, but I'd be interested to know what's going on there.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Yes, Mr Moss.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I haven't got many new points to say, so I'll be very brief. My background is I've lived in Stream Farm Close for 23 years, I've been a customer at the Fox, I like the Fox, I helped do the flower arrangements and flower tubs at the property for a number of years as part of beautifying our village. I'm not anti-the Fox, I'm not anti-pubs in general. There were never any great problems until this year, and really, the world has been turned upside down with all the sorts of incident and complaints and problems which we've heard about this morning. This sort of lack of control, I think, has come out this morning, and I for one have little confidence that there's been proper control now under the current licence, and therefore I'm just not satisfied that in these rather complicated timings and so on, we've heard about closing this at nine and so on, that there will be the ability to enforce what has been promised. The number of events, the only figure I heard mentioned this morning were these 15 regulated events, but there are these others, under 10, and the so-called regular activities, which have only been mentioned once, and presumably the live music every Friday night, which I didn't know about, is one of those regular activities which could occur ad infinitum. And I think the last point I have, we've heard a lot about dispersal, and, you know, that is noisy as people leave the pub and so on, car doors slamming and what have you. It does lead, the dispersal does lead to other incidents away from the pub, and there have been incidents of minor vandalism up and down the road, and so I think that is a point on the law and order issue. So I think that's all I can add. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Moss. Colleagues, do you have any questions to ask Mr Moss?
No, no, I'll come back later.
Just a brief thing to add on the sort of lack of control, just a sort of, just sort of my side of the mind, which is that, I know this isn't directly on the premises, but it is right next to the premises, whenever it's busy at the pub, there is constant illegal parking, people park directly on those double yellow lines, and I think it was mentioned that the pub would put up signs to make people quieter, but right next to those double yellow lines, there are police warnings which say, 'Do not park on these lines', it has the Surrey Police logo, it says, 'You will get a ticket', there are loads of signs, people still park on them. So there's, so obviously some section of the customer base just doesn't really care, and, you know, we've even, we've been out there and we've seen people come back to their cars and just joke at us and say, 'Oh, you don't mind, we're parked here, do you?', and then drive off. So, yeah, so some of the customers just are uncontrollable, it seems. Thank you.
Mr Gill, thank you very much, and I apologise, I thought we'd finished. The lady here would like to speak as well, and there are several other people now indicating. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Stacey Baird. I live directly opposite, across the road from the Fox. I completely agree with everything everyone else has said, so I don't want to obviously go over the same stuff, but I did have a lot of that in my notes. There upstairs, windows look directly into my bedroom and my two young children's bedrooms, they are eight and five. We are very uncomfortable with this, and it's very, also very noisy. I have videos and films of the noise and the noise levels that we experience, I wrote a log, I noticed that everything from, submitted to environmental health only goes up to the 1st of July, and that was a date mentioned, I have a whole log of stuff since the 1st of July. It's okay. Yeah, I have a log of instances and disturbance to myself and my children from the 1st of July to the present time. My five-year-old has woken up at nine o'clock in one instance, and all noisy people, because you can hear virtually verbatim what people say. One incident, 12th of August, was when they were up until two, the noise was continuing until 2.20. At, between 8pm and 9.30 was the most noise, there was loud chattering, the music was playing, there was a loud beat, someone shouted, 'Back in the game', I could, you know, I can hear exactly what people are saying, and I shouldn't have to spend half my life going, 'Okay, I need to submit this in evidence, I need to drop making the kids tea', or drop reading them a story at bedtime, to write down this evidence. I went in earlier in the summer to talk to a manager because there was some noise in the garden, it was disturbing me, and he basically said we didn't have any noise, there was no noise, calling me a liar, which other people obviously could substantiate what I was saying, but I went on my own because I thought, 'I want to build a rapport with these people, I want to have a chat, they're my new neighbours'. He didn't want to know, he walked away, he turned his back and walked away, and I had to say, 'Excuse me, I didn't come here for a confrontation, I came here for a discussion about how we're going to move forward and live together'. And then, so in my attempt at trying to have a conversation, it was re-established, and that's when my concerns were raised, he started to tell me about all these events that were going to occur, and I was concerned, and he just said, 'We're allowed to do whatever we like as a pub, other pubs', as they were saying, 'Other pubs have different regulations', absolutely, 'but this one has a unique topography, it has a unique closeness to all its neighbours, and they want to do these, all these events, and it's inappropriate, it makes me feel very protective of my family and my children, we want to be able to use our garden and comfortably without feeling like we're using our garden with everyone else across the road. It is very close, it may only just, it may be across the road, but it's actually very close to us, and the noise projects, so, you know, I worry about not just the upstairs becoming licensable and being used regularly, also the downstairs terrace is very noisy. If they are going to use it, they might have moved a sm-- to use it, they might have moved the smoking area and say, oh, it's away from all the property boundaries. It's actually nearer to my side of the road. So that is noisy. Um, if they could soundproof and put up huge fences, maybe that would go some way to, to helping me live my life. Um, I'm, yeah, I'm prepared to, to sort of play you a video of, of the noise if, if I can get it to work with your wifi, um, if you'd like me to. Um, I don't see why their business success, I'm very happy for the, for the pub to exist. Um, why should the business's success be more important than the residents and their comfort and being able to use their habitable spaces? Um, I feel it's wrong. Um, and I apologise if I didn't submit all these things, but I've had, um, a death in the family, so I haven't been able to submit this noise log. So I can do that, um, if that's helpful or play you anything. Thank you for the opportunity to come here.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
No, no.
Do you have any questions? Thank you very much.
Mrs Jordan.
Mrs Jordan, I believe that you would like to address this.
Um, I agree with everything everybody said. Um, and, um, I live right opposite. And now they've taken down all the wooded bit. Um, the, um, everything up on the garden looks right into my garden. So now I can't even sit on my patio or use, use my lovely garden. Um, I did approach someone from the Fox, one of the partners, to come over to have a look. Um, and he said, oh yes, I'll come. But he never did. So I think they just do what they like. And they're not really interested in the people that live around. Um, when my grandchildren come to stay, they can't get to sleep or they get woken up. Um, and, you know, I, I feel that, um, they've lost sight that it's a village. And really, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Jordan, I think.
Mr Morris.
Mr Morris.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This will be very, very short. And it's in a, it's, it's in a sort of sense, a sort of closing comments. Um, like Noel and a lot of other people here, I was a regular user of the Fox. Uh, and I initially welcomed the development work being carried out by the new owners. Um, I've also used the pub since the developments, um, although less and less now because it's become so busy. It's, it's actually not as pleasant as it used to be. Um, but as times gone by have become increasingly uneasy about its impact on the local area. I think the real issue here is one of proportionality and reasonableness. With a pub located in a residential area, there is a fine balance between the needs of the business and the needs of the local community. This balance is critical and does indeed present unique challenges, as my colleague on the right has already mentioned. I think you will have heard the current situation, um, from the comments from my neighbours, is frankly already pushing the boundaries of this and indeed has probably exceeded it, uh, what is acceptable. And I mean acceptable in the context of the licensing objectives, not in terms of, you know, other responses. So I think it's already pushing it. And therefore I think this licensing variation, in particular the timing extensions without condition, goes completely beyond this and tips the balance firmly against the local community. And I think this cannot go unchallenged. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Colleagues, do you have anything?
No.
Does anybody else wish to say anything? Concern and interest, would you now like to respond, Mr Warren? Could I perhaps, and perhaps I shouldn't be saying this, but perhaps be considering triple glazing on the building and perhaps fencing and an immediate planting plan? Thank you.
I, I can't make offers of those things now, as, as you'll, you'll fully appreciate. Um, you'll have noticed Morgan's been taking notes throughout, very carefully on all the points that have been made. Um, so from his perspective and obviously from Green King's perspective, um, we will look at anything we can do that, that relates to, to the issues. For, for instance, I know, and it, you know, um, residents might say we've done nothing. But for instance, the playhouse got moved to try and help with the issue of people seeing into the window of one of the residents. Um, I, and, and again, you know, this notion that nothing's been done, I, I think is, is slightly unfair. Um, hang on.
The playhouse got moved because it was not in accordance with the planning wishes. It wasn't for the bottom.
It, it can't move. Um, can I?
It's funny.
I, I, I know Mr Gill from, from the residents' meeting and, and fully appreciate he's very passionate about the, the things he says. So, um, I expect I might get interrupted again. But, um, the, the, the reality is, we, uh, have to consider what's, what's right under the licensing and, and not the planning. There are some planning conditions, and those planning conditions are not relevant to this application. Those planning conditions have been put in place, and if they get breached, they will be dealt with by enforcement under planning law. Um, in the same way, there has been, uh, a, a plan, a management plan that's been under, uh, constant to and fro with the planning officers to deal with it. So, so to say that nothing has been done is, is wrong. The, the fact that the plan isn't quite there yet is not indicative of the fact that there hasn't been attempts to make it, uh, right. And when that is finished, we will, uh, disclose that, as, as we said earlier. The, so, this notion of no sense of community. Now, now clearly a lot of people are very upset about what's gone before. And, and we take this on board. And no one wants to be in a position where we're all here, uh, fighting against each other. Um, a lot of allegations have been made that, um, we will have to look at and reflect upon quite carefully. But again, the residents' meeting was, uh, done for the right reasons and directly led to changes to the application. So it wasn't a case of lip service and then just do what we want. Uh, simply unfair. Um, for, for those people who live across the, the road, um, uh, and have an issue with, with a dining room being open above it, is effectively is a dining room. I, I'd submit that it's very difficult to suggest that that's somehow attached to the licensing objectives. What I will say about this is the windows themselves, um, all bar one, are actually painted shut at the moment. Um, as in you cannot open the windows, bar one, um, which obviously should assist in terms of alleviating, uh, some of those concerns that have been raised. And this notion you can't be a gastropub and an entertainment venue. Well, actually, you can be a community pub that does do both with respect. Um, it's about the levels at which those things are done and when they are done. Um, a significant amount of money is being spent on replacing the kitchen. And, and you've been on the website, so you've seen a lot of, is made of the new chef who's coming in, uh, who, who will add to that. Now, what, what the residents will say is, well, that'll just add to the problems because more people will come to the pub. Um, that the pub is popular is, uh, we say a positive thing for the community. It has its downsides. We, we appreciate that. We try, will try and work towards those. The, the success of the pub was, was very quick. Um, it has been a very short period of time. Um, and so we are trying to work to actually, uh, achieve the things we can do. Um, if this committee were minded to grant the later hours, we'd happily accept a, a last entry condition on a Friday and Saturday night from eleven o'clock. Ten o'clock's just simply not, uh, a viable option. But from eleven o'clock on a Friday and Saturday night, we'd, we'd happily say no new entry. So that would then lead to the dispersal we're talking about. We don't expect anyone to arrive after that time in any event for the reasons I said. But if you were minded to grant, then, then we'd happily accept a condition, uh, that asks for a no new entry time. There's a lot that, that's been said about lack of control and little confidence. There's clearly little confidence in the management. Um, and there has been a couple of managers of the premises that have, uh, been let go because they've not been up to the snuff, uh, standards that we want. A new manager has just been appointed who, uh, is, is starting very shortly, who is going to be made, uh, it will be made incredibly clear that a, a significant part of his role is to ensure that the pub's, uh, position within the community is fully understood and fully reflected. Um, we, we've not been happy with one of the managers who was there. Um, we do understand that some people have come in and, and not received the answers they want. We, we hope that that can be rectified with, with good, robust management. I'm slightly surprised to hear a councillor suggest, uh, that people should be judged guilty without a fair trial of the evidence, um, which is effectively what was said. Um, uh, and, and I would suggest that actually we need to consider the evidence of things before we make any, uh, such, uh, determinations. On the 12th of August, there was a party and, and we apologise for the disturbance that, that that caused. Um, if anyone was, uh, called a liar by anyone, we would ask that that kind of thing gets raised with Green King immediately. That's, that's wholly unacceptable. Um, and indeed with the new manager, we would hope that you would never feel that way as residents. I'm pleased to hear some of the residents say they want the pub to exist and they're happy that a pub's there. Um, that, that's comforting. Um, we know we've got a long way to go in terms of working with the residents to build the reputation and, and build, uh, some kind of trust. Um, we would hope that you would give the new manager a chance, um, when he does come in to, to build that kind of relationship. Um, there was a point made that if you don't close the entire garden at nine o'clock, then it has no effect whatsoever. Well, that's when one considers it, uh, carefully, not, not strictly true. It's a, it's a big garden. It goes up the back, and then you've got the big terrace area, and then you've got the patio, and then you've got, uh, the smoking area. The size restriction alone to a smoking area would have a dramatic effect on the noise levels by the simple reason you could not have that many people out there. Um, and indeed, as your policy notes, you know, as you go later into the night past ten o'clock, I think your policy refers to ten o'clock, then more needs to be done as management. Nine o'clock is a very early closing time for those parts of the garden. We've suggested that, um, if we have everyone down in that smoking area alone, that will drive most people, or a lot of people inside anyway, because we have to close off the other areas. Those that remain, um, can be managed because they're in a more enclosed area. And we see no reason why they couldn't have their drinks outside up till eleven o'clock, which we think is a reasonable time to tell everyone to, to come in. And now that would fit in with a, a last entry time anyway. So the only people out the front would be smokers. That makes it much easier to manage. What I would say is that, under the previous landlady, there were no restrictions on the use of the garden whatsoever and no restrictions on the use of the smoking terrace or the terrace or any other part of, of, of the garden. And so I think there is a bit of sensitivity here that's, um, born, if you like, out of this lack of trust that we have, uh, from, from the way things started in our relationships. We are, and, and I say this very seriously, um, having had a number of meetings and discussions, we are serious about building good relations. We're serious about trying to make that work. Um, we want to engage with the people we hope will be our customers. But every beer bottle on the street, or every illegal piece of parking, or anyone shouting and screaming as they go down the road, is not directly relevant to the premises or this application. And that's where we have to be careful. Um, what we're promote, proposing is a significant number of conditions for a very modest increase in hours. Um, and as you heard, some, some residents are actually happy to have small extensions on Sunday and New Year's Eve, et cetera. Um, but, but in terms of licensing, I, I presume I'll have a very small chance to sum up the final points at the end. But, but that's my response to the queries or the questions that have been raised.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I'm not, I don't really like talking in crowds like this, so I will be very brief. Um, two points. Mr Warren said himself that it was quieter, um, in, with the previous landlady because the pub was dying on its feet. That, that's why it was quieter. There were less clientele. So, I'm sorry, but there were more people. And, and smokers don't sit outside on their own without their friends. If you're going to have a smoking area, they'll want their friends to join them and they'll all sit there until eleven o'clock at night. I don't think that's right. Uh, I'm, because I have young children, nine o'clock is, is too late for me, but I'm happy to, to compromise. Um, and I don't see why they have to hold you to ransom for a plan, an OES management plan and all their plans until you grant them licensing. Surely it should be the other way around. They have to put into place protection for everybody. And then they are granted extra time to, you know, it, to, to serve alcohol, if that's what they choose. I think we need to have those protections in place. Um, the windows upstairs, there may well be only one working at the moment, but it's regularly open, which breaches their conditions, I believe. Um, twenty-fourth of October was the last time at seven-thirty that I recorded it to be open, because I can still see it at the moment, um, from my bedroom and my kids' bedrooms. And it's noisy. Um, would you like me to play you a video?
I don't think we have quite.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Sorry. Um, it would have been, it would have been nice to have heard responses from the operating management as opposed to the legal representative of Green King to all the issues that we are raising and undertakings from them. Um, as Green Kings say, they have no control over this. So they may say, oh, well, we'll look at this, we'll look at that. But actually, it's not their job to look at this and look at that and to create an operating plan. I absolutely agree that we really, we really can't judge any of this until we see what their proposed controls are. Um, and lastly, on the issue of the outside smoking area, the outside smoking area is entirely hard-surfaced, entirely hard-furnished. It's like a sounding box. If it was soft and sound-absorbent, then maybe there'd be less issues with people hearing this. They say that it's away from properties. It is literally, no, it is what, ten metres, less than ten, it is less than ten metres from the boundary fence. Um, and, yes, personally, I accept the issue that, well, maybe they should be allowed to have their drinks out there a little bit beyond nine o'clock. Eleven o'clock? No way. Soften the area, make it sound-absorbing, and then say you can have your drinks out there till nine-thirty. Stagger it. But please, please, please do something about the noise and nuisance that we suffer daily, nightly, twenty-four-seven, twenty-four, sorry, twenty-four, six, sixteen, seven, whatever it is. Thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, maybe that if, if I get an opportunity to summing up at the end, I'll leave it for that. Thank you.
Uh, Mr Warren, I, I don't know, perhaps you can help us with this. And, and it was, was raised, uh, just a moment ago. But you, you said, uh, there were no restrictions on the outside area under the previous, um, landlord. Has the clientele significantly changed since the change of landlord?
I'll, I'll just take a quick instruction if, if, if that's okay. Um, I think it's fair to say there's a much broader, um, clientele. Um, and indeed, with the difference in trade throughout the day, uh, and into the evening, we do get a much broader clientele. So before, when the pub was, uh, let's say slightly more downhill, it, it, it tended to attract people who just wanted a pint from the local area to, to go. When, when, we are attracting people. So the families, certainly more families, we're certainly attracting more women who like to come in, um, as groups. Um, it's certainly, I'm just, just looking at a note being given to me to see if it relates. Um, yeah, I, there are more people there. There, there is absolutely no doubt about it. And with that comes different clientele as well.
I can just add as well, I mean, it's in, about the community, sorry, we're, we're all about the community, which we, which the pub is. In the mornings, and we've made reference to, um, to, to children, uh, and, and mothers, you know, there are, there are lots of, um, uh, schools, like mothers who use the pub on the way to school and on the way back from school. Would I be right in saying that?
Yeah.
For teas, coffees, pastries. For teas, coffees, pastries. So there is a facility there at the Fox, at the Fox, that there was not before. So that is, I think that is a really good example of how the Fox has changed and changed for the better, and is actually working with the community and giving the community an added facility. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Mr Bainbridge is the borough solicitor, I understand, he has indicated he would like to speak.
So I'm going to lean across my colleague because my mic doesn't work. I can see Mrs Bard, or Miss Bard, perhaps wants to say something else. Probably your advice will be, is it a new point that's coming up here rather than repeat a previous point?
I just wanted to say that I think it's a point Mr Warner made, that he and Mr Lawson, that, yes, mothers are using the facility in the mornings. It's lovely because the cafe actually closed at the top of the hill, so it's nice that we've got somewhere to go in the mornings. Mr Warner, however, made the point that their clientele was also people who work unusual hours and late hours and things, which are a completely different clientele. I just wanted to say, I don't think they can say they are purely a family pub for licensed events, the mothers obviously just drink coffee, so.
Mr Bainbridge, I believe you would like to speak, and then we will hear from others in the office.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I mean, I've got some questions, and sort of to make clear here that my role is to advise you as a committee, as you know. So although I'm speaking after the residents have spoken, I'm speaking now because I think it's important that my questions are raised before you ask any further questions and then conclude all of this. So some of the things I'm asking here are to help you, and because I know these are things that'll be in your head when you retire and consider this application. I want to get some clarity about the smoking area. All the committee will be used to seeing is smoking areas that are close to anyone but smokers after a certain time. It seems to me from what I'm hearing that, and I'm not suggesting that this is in anywhere negative, but what I'm hearing is that any client, any customer would be able to access that smoking area after nine o'clock, between nine and eleven, is that right? So it won't just be restricted to people who want to smoke?
I'll just get clarity for you. The area itself, obviously, we couldn't just simply restrict to smokers. What we're proposing is a condition that says no drinks outside after eleven, twenty-three-hundred hours, so we're proposing that as an addition, which would mean that actually at that point, no one but smokers would use it, because you can't take your drinks outside, et cetera. So that's what we're proposing. What we're proposing is that between nine and eleven, the much smaller area is the only area that's marked on the plan as smoking area that the public could use.
Thank you. So that would, but it would include customers who didn't have drinks, who weren't smoking as well? Sorry, I hate to be pedantic, but that's...
The reality is, it's an area that can be used by all customers, but it's a much smaller restricted area, up till eleven o'clock.
And, thank you. And it may be because I've missed it and just overlooked, but I'm trying to find in the proposed conditions, the eleven o'clock timing. I can see the nine o'clock timing quite clearly, but I can't see the reference in the conditions to eleven. I just need just the page number on the report if I can...
No, that's, I'm saying we're adding that, we're proposing that as an additional condition.
Excellent, thank you. I want to pick up the point about planning and licensing for the benefit of everyone in the room. It's been talked about by residents and our committee and also councillor Lea who spoke. It's not going, just for everyone's benefit, it's not going to be possible to transfer the planning conditions across to the licensing, the premises licence, and that would be true for any application, anywhere in the borough. It may be a source of frustration that the two functions are separate, and it may be a frustration, I think Mr Cross said this, that, you know, the same local authority is looking at this premises from different regulatory angles and that the things don't marry up. Unfortunately, that's just a fact of the way that the two sets of legislation work together. The committee's very much aware of that, as is the licensing authority generally, and the guidance is very, very clear, statutory guidance, that the two functions are separate. So albeit that you might have very different licenses, conditions attached to a planning permission to the licensing, the premises licence, unfortunately, it's just a fact and the things don't always marry because they have different fundamental bases, i.e. a local plan and a licensing policy. So there's a reality there that, you know, whether you want to say it's unfortunate, the committee is aware of and, you know, we live with that. Things may change in the future, but that is, I'm sure that is the position. I just want to check my notes to make sure I haven't missed anything before the committee speak. There was just a point, Mr Warner, you said that the environmental health team had said that they hadn't detected a public nuisance, but can I just clarify, presumably you mean a statutory nuisance, because environmental health are obviously concerned with statutory nuisance, which is a narrower scope to public nuisance, which is the, you know, what the licensing objective is looking at?
Yes, I'm happy to clarify that. What they would have been looking for is a statutory nuisance, but actually, in reality, any recording that would have raised a public nuisance, I'd have expected to have seen that in here as well.
Okay, thank you. No, that's all. Thanks, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Bainbridge. Mr Hughes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It was mentioned earlier, it was referred to, that there was no restrictions on the previous landlord. If you look at page fifteen of the report, there were conditions put on the licence following a licensing hearing previous, which would have been on the previous landlady, and they were mainly to do with music. They would have been suspended, however, following the Live Music Act when that came into force, so would have been suspended since then, which was two thousand and twelve, I believe.
Sorry. So the licence here that I've got is the twenty-fourth of November two thousand and sixteen, and it says that all music events, with the exception of the annual music festival, shall be held indoors only. Is that...
Yeah, when the live music came out, it gave authority to licensed premises and alcohol to have live music and recorded music later on, between the hours eight and eleven P M, are non-licensable, and any licence conditions on a premises licence between those times become suspended. Out of those times, they're back in force, but when it becomes non-licensable, they're suspended.
Thank you. I really have to say that we should have a long time ago now moved to the closing submissions, but we are all very keen that you should have the opportunity to be heard and also for the applicants to respond. Mr Cross, this is definitely the last time...
I would like two very simple clarifications. Firstly, Daniel said that licensing and planning operate separately, I understand that, but is there anything to prevent the licensing committee putting a condition on the licence that is parallel to and identical with the planning noise prevention conditions?
Happy for me to answer, Chair?
Yes, please, if you would.
No, in the same way that there's nothing to prevent them imposing conditions that are completely different, provided they are...
Okay.
Provided that their discretion's engaged by...
Yeah, okay, thank you, that's all I wanted, that's all I wanted to know on that.
Thank you very much.
Do you not want to ask my question?
Brilliant. Thank you very much. Do my colleagues have any questions? Well, I think we are now moving. Oh, I beg your pardon.
Sorry, Chairman. Two quick things, really. I thought I was totally clear on the smoking area, now I'm not so sure. If a smoker wants to go out of the restaurant and have a cigarette at eight o'clock in the evening, where's he going? Where can he go?
Sorry, eight o'clock in the evening?
Yes, twenty-one hundred.
Twenty-one hundred hours, he can go absolutely anywhere, in the garden.
Right, at nine fifteen?
At nine fifteen, he would have to go to the area that's, if you look at Plan forty-seven, the area that's marked smoking area, so immediately outside the front of the premises.
Fine, alongside the two, it's...
Yes, so that area, if you draw a line from the edge of the building across, that's the area.
And the other one, we talked about noise checks and not being able to hear outside the air. I've got acute hearing, therefore, what I can hear, my wife can't hear. Who decides where and what really are, what is the noise level? Where is it measured? Who is going to do it?
It's the eternal question, actually, in any licensing hearing that relates to music. In a world where you wanted exactitude, the only way to do that would be able to visit everyone's house and stand in their lounge with their windows open or closed, or however they live, and to take a test there, that's simply not viable and one can't do it. So all of this has to be to a level of a manager taking an informed decision. Now, there used to be a condition that people put on licences that was deemed to be potentially illegal, which was absolutely no nuisance at the boundary of any given property. And the problem with that condition is the boundary of a property is not a place where you could establish a public nuisance. So no noise was a test that was so far above what should have been that it couldn't be used. And certainly nowadays, people move from that. The way it works is that if a manager goes outside and stands at the boundary of someone's property and the music is loud enough for him to be able to hear the lyrics, or, you know, that should be a test that engages. The way it works in practice is actually, one would hope that you get that right every time. There are occasions where sometimes you can't get it quite right, but if you have a good working relationship, then, you know, a neighbour can phone up and say, I can hear this, either turn it down or when are you finishing, what's going on, I just want to know. We're not quite there yet. The management will have to exercise a slightly stricter test at the moment to try and ensure that they can build the confidence and trust. But it has to be part of a management plan for the manager to go out and do it, as you heard, they do with sound checks now.
And the CCTV is only to be viewed by management, the police, and one other, I've forgotten who the other one is. Environmental health?
Potentially. It's not quite that simple, and unfortunately, in April next year, the data protection laws will change, and it's going to make it incredibly difficult for anyone. Nowadays, you have to register as a data provider, you have to go to the Information Commission's office and pay them a fee and all of those things. Rest assured, no one's going to be putting cameras that can view into anyone else's garden or anyone else's property, that goes without saying. How many cameras one uses and the reasons for them is going to have to be actually managed on a premises-by-premises basis, depending on any crime disorder. The police have not had a problem with this premises for crime disorder, this is just at the moment to assist, but, yeah, CCTV is the next big minefield, as I'm currently writing articles to every single piece of press in the country to remind them.
Sure, fortunately. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, you've been incredibly patient. I have been reminded that we now need to break for lunch, and I do hope that everybody will be able to come back, but I do feel that you've had the opportunity to be heard. We will break for lunch, return one thirty, is that long enough? Yes. Right.
We'll adjourn to one thirty.
We'll adjourn the meeting until one thirty. Thank you. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we are now back in session, thank you very much, and we're going to move now to part three, which are the closing submissions, when, and as I believe has happened, all of the parties have been heard. Councillor Lea, I do realise that you have an urgent appointment, so I have consulted with Environment and Health and they're happy for you to go first. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. I do hope and trust that the committee will accept the arguments that we've put forward today as a residential side to the business with ongoing noise and public nuisance, and that this evidently through the emails and the reports have come backwards, didn't stop several months ago, they've been ongoing. I think it also unreasonable to allow any extension of licensing hours until all of the available management plans are in place, and in particular, a visible noise management plan. So in summary, I ask that the following conditions be attached to the licence. Point one, amplified noise should not be audible outside the site boundary. Point two, that doors and windows must remain closed throughout any regulated entertainment. Point three, I think that an absolute number of musical events that may take place in the gardens each year be limited to a maximum of six, and this, of course, excludes any arrangements available through TENS appropriations. These events, of course, should not also be amplified. Item four, that licensing hours in the evening remain as currently in place, although we do accept that an additional one hour on each bank holiday, Sunday and New Year's Eve, should be acceptable. And lastly, we would not wish to see an earlier licence made available in the morning due to the proximity of the infant school. I think that is a fair summary, I think, of the requests from the evidence made today by the residents. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Lea, for that submission, we've taken note. Environmental health, thank you very much, perhaps you'd like to make your point?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to remind everyone that it's from an environmental health point of view, it's not just about public nuisance, it's whether it causes a statutory nuisance as well, which we've yet to determine. The plans that they've been mentioned, we need to see that these are put into place and what it entails, so that we're understanding of what management measures are being put in place for both noise management and any other management for any antisocial behaviour within their own properties. Music in the garden, so I would, you know, I'm still concerned that this could be fifteen events plus all the TENS, so in essence, there could be thirty outdoor events, and I want to still know how the smoking area is going to be, and the patio is going to be divided to stop people sitting outside until eleven o'clock at night. And I'd like you to, you know, obviously, take all those points into consideration, please.
Thank you very much. I believe now we have reached the stage where the... I beg your pardon. Beg your pardon. Gentlemen? Am I apologising, Mr?
We all make mistakes from time to time, everybody. I'd just like to echo entirely what councillor Lea has said, but also add and pick up the point that environmental health had said, we do need a better control of the smoking area after nine o'clock. It's not acceptable to us to have that effectively an open outdoor area until eleven o'clock at night, that would create a problem. So maybe some compromise on between nine o'clock and eleven o'clock, gentlemen, just a thought. Let's try and move this forwards. Thank you.
Did you have something? Thank you, you have as well. Thank you, Mr. It's your turn now, and I apologise.
No need to apologise, I'm quite happy to wait to the end to do these things. There are a few points I have to make, and it's with a heavy heart that I make these points, but it's only fair I do on behalf of the operators, given some of the comments that have been made by the residents today. When they came into the pub, one of the first things they did was set up a focus group that involved members of the community to find out what kind of pub they wanted. Now, that's, the residents will say, well, we weren't involved in that, you know, the people sitting here, but there was a genuine attempt to engage with the community, to find out what kind of pub was wanted, bearing in mind it was almost a blank canvas, given all the problems that were there before. And that informed and became the direction for where the premises has gone and this application before you. At the start, there was a concerted effort and we dispute any notion that there was none, there was a concerted effort to engage with residents, neighbours who live very close and those who live slightly further away. The way it was presented to you by some of the residents was that actually, the premises just simply played lip service to everything that was said and never really tried to engage properly, that's just simply not quite the truth. There were proposals put forward that met with resistance from the residents, so they were withdrawn. Things were changed, there were proposals put forward where some residents seemed to be happy with it, but actually at the last minute, they got changed. This play area is a prime example of one that you heard about earlier. At one hand, we thought that actually it was something that was being looked at positively, but in the end, the residents put their foot down and so that got nixed. Concessions were made all along the line and indeed, a great deal of frustration on the part of the operators was experienced in the way that some of the residents dealt with things. And indeed, when addressing customers and staff, I'm afraid to say, some of the residents haven't been quite as polite as maybe you would get the impression they have been and it's all been one-sided. I was not going to mention that at all, apart from it got raised on a number of occasions and I therefore feel it's only fair that we redress the balance. For whatever reason, there is frustration on two sides here. We want to draw a line in the sand and we want to get to a point where actually everyone can sit together and work things out reasonably. We had a residents' meeting to try and do that, it was not lip service. The residents that were there had every opportunity to say anything they wanted to say. I stood there for the best part of, I think, two hours, listened to residents and their views were taken on board and that was reported to everyone. We then wrote to the residents afterwards, saying, look, we're going to make this application, it's not everything you've asked for, but we've compromised where we feel we can. Again, there's this conflation of the facts, I would put it that way, to suggest that the ills are all the responsibility of the pub. Not everyone who parks on a verge is going to the pub. There are people who have guests around or parties at their houses, people come and can't park in their drives, they can be just as responsible. People coming back from Farnham have been witnessed by the operators of the pub themselves, breaking things, tipping over things, they've damaged some of the property of the pub themselves. You know, bottles they're bringing back in from town have been dumped around as well. So again, it's not simply easy to say, well, it's the pub, it's not, that's unfair. And the same with people urinating, as abhorrent as it is, is it more likely that they would have come some distance and needed to relieve themselves than walk straight out of a pub door? One has to ask, actually, it's more likely they've come from somewhere else. We held two music events, one in October, one in November, for the first time here today and it's not in any evidence and wasn't presented. Apparently, one of those events was audible a long way away, well, we dispute that, actually. It was an acoustic event at the premises and we didn't receive any complaints. And when you look at the evidence that you have before you, there is no statutory nuisance or indeed, any allegation of public nuisance from a recording device held in a house of a resident. That's quite strong evidence that actually, this notion that every night there is this cacophony that seems to be what's being alleged just doesn't marry with the facts, I'm afraid to say. We don't want discos or karaoke, apart from on the odd event. Now, on the twelfth of August, things didn't go as well as they could have gone, it was a late night event. Indeed, the resident who came round and said they complained to a member of staff and got short shrift, actually was trying to argue with a customer, it wasn't a staff member. You can't be blamed, you know, if you're a customer of an event and someone comes up and starts telling you what you're doing is not right, I'm afraid sometimes you might get a little short shrift there. We want to work with people, but again, we have to put these things in the context in which they did happen. The bouncy castle got mentioned, that got shut early on the Sunday night, you know, we know that they're quite disturbing things sometimes, so actually, you know, the decision was made, close it down earlier than we could have done, just to try and get that balance right. So we're trying to get a balance. And then we've got this application now before you with five different parts. The New Year's Eve hours and the extensions seem to be being accepted to a certain degree, so I'll leave those to one side, obviously it's for you to determine whether it's proportionate to permit that. The first floor dining room as it is, you'll be pleased to hear that actually, part of the current renovation works that are ongoing before the opening this week is to add extra sound deadening into the structure. So hopefully that will assist with noise deadening. Some of the windows, as we've said, are actually sealed shut or painted shut at the moment, but we'd happily look at how best to manage and ensure the windows certainly aren't open during music. And again, when they say, well, actually it was a breach of condition, it wasn't a breach of condition, there was no regulated entertainment at the time, we think the window was open, but we will do our best and we will look at it. There is no reason, I would submit therefore, that you cannot grant that part of the application because it wouldn't, to do so does not undermine the licensing objectives at all. And then we get to the meat of this application, which is, in fact, let's deal with the early morning hours first and then let's get to the real meat of it. We can open at eight o'clock anyway, that's already on the licence, we're not looking to open any earlier, we're looking to do one licensable activity slightly earlier. It's unlikely it will be used very often, but it would be a useful thing. Again, I can't see that that would undermine the licensing objectives and I didn't hear anything really put to you that would suggest otherwise. So that leaves us with the use of and management of the garden, down into the smoking area and then finally hours. Well, let's look at the garden. To close the garden at nine o'clock, which we have offered, is a big concession. It's a big concession for a premises that spent a lot of time and money and albeit, there are some teething problems. We had offered to put extra blanking out material out to ensure no one could look in the window of the resident. That eventually ended up actually being thrown in the dustbin because there were so many different elements of the complaints, there was no agreement that could be reached. And this was the problem we had, you know, we've tried to come up with solutions and sometimes, I'm not saying all the time, sometimes we found it impossible to get to a right solution. So we'll keep trying, we'll keep trying, we're not scared of a little hard work, but just to say, well, we simply said something and then didn't do it is not strictly fair. We closed the garden at nine, that's a big concession to make. We closed the big patio area, that's a big concession to make. To move everyone into a small area which has a maximum of around twenty seats, which means that you've got a very limited space for people to go, whether they're smoking or not smoking up till eleven o'clock, we suggest is perfectly reasonable in the circumstances and in fact, for most pubs, you would have an area where you could do that. We have chosen that area that's away, it is slightly further away, it's got more of a cover on it and it actually does, I mean, there are hard services, of course, but actually, we don't accept that that would be unreasonable in the circumstances. It's an easier area to manage, it's right by the windows, it's easily observable, people collecting glasses can manage that and indeed, we've not had any problems, I know the environmental health officer mentioned this, with the distinguishing between the patio and the smoking area, we already manage that and it seems to work very, very well. So evidently, we can say we can do that, but if it ever needed barriers, of course, we'd look at that, but that would be a management decision if necessary. So again, having a small external area where people can go out and smoke and have a drink and it can be well managed until eleven o'clock and then no drinks outside, only smokers, we see as being proportionate and appropriate in the circumstances, given all the concessions that have been made for the garden and the other outside areas. And as we have said, we'll happily offer a last entry time of eleven o'clock, as well as a condition saying that there will be no drinking outside on the smoking area after eleven o'clock as a means to give more comfort that after eleven o'clock, the additional hours are dispersal hours. Now, we would suggest no last entry after eleven o'clock on Friday and Saturdays because those are the busiest nights where actually, people do tend to be there. Otherwise, there is quite a natural drift off anyway earlier during the working week. So Friday and Saturdays, no new entry after eleven o'clock, you know, only smokers allowed on the terrace. We think that will give you a good, long dispersal where you minded to grant the very modest extension in hours. And I'll leave you with this, any new business is going to be held hostage to fortune as to how that business runs. You can plan everything as much as you want, but the moment the first customer comes through the door, you're going to be presented with a new problem and a new issue and you work to work through these issues as you go. A pub that was, you know, at death's door, is the only way to describe it, it had no future, was revived with a great deal of expense and care, not to everyone's taste, we fully accept that, but, you know, to a lot of people's taste, because we did do our focus groups. And it became popular very quickly and in becoming popular very quickly, it has the problem that people do come and you've got to manage those people. The garden was popular because at the start, when they first opened, we had a lovely initial part to the summer and then it turned into a usual English summer and I can't recall, you know, any vitamin D coming from outside of a pill since probably about June. You know, you live with what you've got, it's a nice space and actually, we've never done anything but hold our hands up and say, look, there were mistakes made, we've tried to work with people. The management plan on the planning side, we're working through with that, we have a planning consultant who's working very hard on that. We now have a winter period in which to ensure that that is got up to the exacting and robust standards of your colleagues on the planning side and that will be in place for opening next year, whatever, because that's part of the planning. But it doesn't mean you have to apply the same conditions exactly the same way to licensing. In fact, duplication is to be avoided if you can. So there we are, we admit that some mistakes have been made, we admit things could have been done better. We would like to be in a position to say, yes, we're now working very closely with the residents, that simply isn't as close as we want at the moment, for whatever reason, I think it's a bit on both sides, is my assessment, coming in from the outside and actually having to sit in on the residents' meeting and hearing everything today. But I think some of the points that have been made by the residents candidly have been made a little unfairly. I'm asking you to grant a modest application here today and to look at each stage of that application and then compare it to the licensing objectives. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, do you have any questions?
One.
Yes, please.
Excuse me, we just mentioned the twenty-three hundred stop people coming in. What about the New Year, bank holidays and the other bits and pieces where you are looking to go on to twenty-two hundred? Oh, two hundred, sorry.
If your colleague passed the note over, I'm very, very grateful for looking at that. I would say that possibly New Year's Eve, one would suggest would not sit within that. You know, so the no entry would not perhaps catch that day, but the other days, we have no problem with. But New Year's Eve, yes, maybe would be a bit, a good one to have a little exemption on.
Yeah, no, just the, it was interesting, the pub in Chillingford recently on Bonfire Night had a no entry after, I think it was about five thirty in the afternoon. Of course, they were fully booked for the evening entertainment, so that was interesting, but nevertheless, is important. I am still confused over the smoking bit and the patio area. I am sorry to be so awkward, dim, whatever you care to call it. The patio area where you have to climb up those very steep steps and the ladies present would find it quite difficult to get up there, as we did on my visit to the pub on a planning matter. The patio area, the steps are quite deep. And ladies that I was with certainly found difficulty climbing up. Got nothing to do with what we're talking about now, but just mention it, that I have been there, I know the situation very well. Where twenty-one hundred, I think, is quite appropriate for closing it, but you then said we will move elsewhere for the drinkers, you can drink and smoke outside until twenty-three hundred. So which bit of the patio, if we can go to your planned proposed site on page forty-seven, there's the vertical line that goes from the gate, I think it says, upwards. That patio area there is closed at nine o'clock?
Yes, I can. We can project this on the screen, apparently.
That'd be nice.
Although you might have to crane your necks to see it, oh, you've got it in the screen.
Yes, you see what I mean?
Yes, so I've just drawn that arrow, so you can see obviously the garden at the top with the cabanas.
Yes.
And then you have the, the arrow goes down into the patio area. So those two close, exactly, those two close at nine. Everyone has to move south of the line, as it were, which is an imaginary line, but that's the smoking area, the only, the only area people would be allowed to congregate in after nine o'clock, between nine and eleven.
With a glass and a cigarette?
With a glass and a cigarette.
Pipe or cigar or whatever the implement they chose.
And after eleven o'clock, no glasses whatsoever allowed in any of that and the only place people could have a cigarette would be in that little area.
Thank you, sorry to be so slow getting there.
It's worth getting it absolutely right.
I think I am now there. Interesting, and I'm not going to stray into planning, but the Fox, of course, is a great-to-listed building, therefore glazing and other things become something of a problem, so I hope that is taken care of by whoever. And our historic buildings officer is satisfied with whatever plans you have for that. But to restrict them, excuse me, to restrict noise and viewing, it's going to be a little more difficult, I think, than some, I just wonder if you've got any idea?
We were discussing upstairs, we were discussing that first floor room, which is a dining room, so actually, most people are seated anyway, so it's not like they're looking up and out the window, if that makes sense. And I'm afraid it's part of living in a built-up area, isn't it? One can't ever have all privacy, one of the things, there are blinds there which we'd happily close, you know, at dusk, whatever time dusk happens to be.
Shortly.
Which is in half an hour, yeah. But, you know, there are measures that could be used, certainly if that room was ever being used for more of a stand-up thing, but actually, the reality is it's a sit-down dining room for the most of the time, so people tend not to be gawping out the windows, I suppose. And whether that actually falls within a licensing purview as well, I'm denarred about how it would.
Yeah, so am I.
Yeah, absolutely, so I don't think there's anything that's been said really that's licensing-related that would prevent you from granting that part, you know, in isolation.
No, indeed.
Thank you, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your patience and understanding. This is a very complex issue and obviously quite controversial for local residents. The subcommittee will now withdraw. I really don't think we're going to be back before half past two at the earliest. Obviously, there's a lot to consider. So we will now withdraw to consider the matter. Oh, excuse me, licensing officer.
Madam Chair, could I just ask the applicant if they're happy for us to put a dotted line on the plans to designate that smoking area so as agree that on the screen says quite clear in future years?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your patience. I apologise, it did take us a lot longer, but it was a very serious matter to be considered. And this is the decision of the licensing subcommittee A. During the deliberations, the council solicitor was asked to advise the subcommittee on suitable wording for their decision. The subcommittee carefully considered the application for a new premises licence, taking into account the representations received, statutory guidance and the council's statement of licensing policy, twenty thirteen to twenty eighteen. Excuse me. The subcommittee has agreed to grant a variation to the The subcommittee has agreed to grant a variation to the licence in part, as it did not consider that there was sufficient substantiated evidence to reject the application in its entirety. However, taking into account the significant concerns of the objectors and those raised by envi- environmental health, the subcommittee has amended the conditions put forward by the applicant in the operating schedule and added further conditions. The amended and additional conditions are proportionate and appropriate to address the licensing objectives relating to prevention of nuisance. The committee has considered each variation in turn and its decisions are noted below as well as the additions approved, imposed, I beg your pardon. To permit alcohol sales for an extra thirty minutes after existing alcohol hours on Monday to Saturday with thirty minutes thereafter for closing. For the sale of alcohol, it will not permit the additional hours requested in the morning, nor those requested in the evening. This is because of the significant concerns raised about noise nuisance from residents and environmental health, concerns that are shared by the subcommittee. To confirm, the timings are as follows. Supply of alcohol, ten-thirty to twenty-three-hundred hours, Monday to Thursday. Ten-thirty to twenty-three-thirty hours, Friday and Saturday. Eleven-hundred hours to twenty-two-thirty, Sundays. Opening hours, oh-eight-thirty to twenty-three-thirty, Monday to Thursday. Oh-eight-thirty to midnight, Friday and Saturday. Eleven-hundred to twenty-three-hundred hours on Sunday. Permit licence activity on the first floor. The subcommittee do not permit licensing licensable activities on the first floor, but does agree to the consumption of alcohol and alcohol being served as ancillary to dining use. This is because of the concerns expressed by residents regarding the noise and windows being close to residential buildings. Permit the hours for licensing licensable, and I'm sorry, I keep on struggling with that one, activities to extend on New Year's Eve, terminal hour until oh-two-hundred hours on New Year's Day. The subcommittee does allow for licensable activities to extend on New Year's Eve, terminal hour, until oh-two-hundred hours on New Year's Day. Non-standard timings for the Sunday preceding a bank holiday Monday, Christmas Eve and Boxing Day, where these days fall on a Sunday, are proposed from oh-eight-thirty until twenty-three-thirty for licensable activities with thirty minutes thereafter for closing. The subcommittee, noting that residents raised no objections to this variation and no other representations were received except this variation. Remove all conditions on the operating schedule until further details, except mandatory conditions and replace with nuance, please see the application attached at annex two. The subcommittee accepts all the conditions submitted by the licensee, however, to address representations received, impose the following variations and additional conditions. The additional conditions, a written garden and terrace management policy, the policy will be drawn up by the premises holder and agreed with environmental health and licensing teams and implemented by the DPS by no later than the twenty-second of December two thousand and seventeen. A written dispersal management plan, the management plan, will be drawn up by the premises holder and agreed with the environmental health and licensing teams and implemented by the DPS by no later than the twenty-second of December two thousand and seventeen. Only six additional events will be permitted outside the premises, not the fifteen that were requested, but are in addition to the permissible tens. All doors and windows will be shut after twenty-three-hundred hours, except for access and egress. The designated smoking area will be closed to customers carrying drinks after twenty-three-hundred hours. The subcommittee advises you that you have the right of appeal with the magistrates court within twenty-one days of the decision being received in writing. Thank you, that is the decision. Could I mention to the objectors, if you do experience problems or have complaints, it would be helpful if you could please remember to contact the environmental health department and licensee. Thank you very much.
Where is that?
Here.
In the.
Where do we get a copy of that as a written document?
The decision that the chairman's just read out, yeah, I can email it to you and it will be published on the, or Paul will send it to you.